I'm gonna go ahead and get going. Do you see Supervisor Bushnell trying to get on, Ryan?
I can, I don't see her in the attendee queue, but I can certainly have someone go to her.
Yeah, she's probably just, yeah, she's just not able, not quite on yet, but I know she's in the building. So we will go ahead and start, and I'm sure she will make it. So, welcome to the May 18th Board of the Board Meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. And just to let everyone know, in accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. And you can participate via the Zoom calling phone number, which is located on the screen and on our agenda at the front of the agenda. So at this time, Ryan, would you please do a roll call?
We're probably in a pretty good place there, but just other than being underserved.
John, you gotta turn off your mic.
Somebody's saying a prayer.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, John.
Thank you. Supervisor Bass?
Here.
Supervisor Bone?
Happy to be here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Present.
Supervisor Madron?
Here.
And Supervisor Bushnell, I don't, still don't see her on.
I see her. Yes, I'm here, Ryan.
Thank you. Everyone's here.
All right, thank you. So at this time, please join me in Salute the Flag. I'm Ryan.
I'm bringing it up right now. Thank you.
With, with a breath.
Thank you for standing.
Okay, you're testing my patience here. Hey, thank you very much. Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Ryan. So, little information for those of you who may be new to attending our meetings, and a reminder for those who have been with us often. For those of you who would like to call in and make a comment on an item, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. And when it's your turn to speak, you will be asked to press star six to unmute. And once you call in, turn the volume off your TV and actually don't even look at your TV or your screen, because there is a time delay and it gets confusing, and you could actually lose your opportunities to speak because it's like a 30-second time delay. So please try that as, when you can, and it makes things much simpler. I'm strict on the three-minute time rule, and at two and a half minutes, you will hear this sound. And that means you have two, you have, you have 30 seconds to wrap up. And that's because everyone should have the same amount of time to talk to the board. And so don't take it personally, it's just for consistency's sake. Also, I'd like to take a break because I know it's really important, not for just the board members and the staff, but for people who might be watching us at home. And normally I try to take a guess when, and lately I have not been so good at that. So if I have not called for a break and one of the board members feels that they could benefit by a brief break, just let me know and we will fit one in. So with that, I'd like to go over to our CIL and ask if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Morning Chair Bass, there are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I would like to turn this over to Supervisor Madron as he has asked for a little bit of time.
Thank you very much, Chairman Bass. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm gonna read a brief statement here related to some comments I made last week at the board meeting. "To the whole community, I offer my sincere apology to the whole community, my colleagues on the board, all staff with the county, and especially those that I may have offended with my use of an inappropriate term and the using of harmful broad generalizations at last week's Board of Supervisors meeting. I understand now that the term Oriental generalizes vast swaths of diverse lands and peoples, including Asian-Americans of various ancestries. Asia is an incredibly complex and diverse continent with hundreds of different countries and cultural groups, and Americans of Asian descent are just as diverse. Each nation, cultures, and ethnic identity should be recognized and honored for its own unique cultural heritage, whereas the term Oriental contributes to an ignorant homogenization that is both offensive and dehumanizing to those it touches. For these reasons, I am truly sorry for contributing to this racist oversimplification of the world with my ignorant language, and am committed to learning more and better representing myself and the people going forward. May is the month to celebrate the history of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. It is not about a ceremony. It is a time dedicated to learn about the history of different cultures, which includes everything from the key contributions Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have made to the United States to marginalization that is spanned generalization. This has been a very teachable moment for myself. And again, I offer my sincere apologies for my actions." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much Supervisor Madron. Very well put. At that point, since there are no modifications to the agenda, we'll move on the consent, to the consent calendar, or is there anyone willing to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm moving consent. Second.
Thanks, we have a motion in a second. We'll go out for public, oh, yes, Supervisor Bushnell.
I just wanted to make a brief comment, if I could, about the Burndale Vets Hall. I, I am so excited that they're getting an opportunity to apply for funding and for getting the chance to have the maintenance done that they need to their buildings. And I understand that these are shovel-ready monies, and I sincerely am excited about the aspect of the future for Garberville Vets Hall that when we get to that point, that we will be able to hopefully apply for some of this also to help the Garberville Vets, the Garberville Vets Building. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I also wanted to congratulate one of our retirees. We never like it when someone leaves us after many years of service, but we have Legal Office Assistant John Wilson from the Sheriff's Office, who actually has a resolution as well on this agenda. And I want to thank him for his years of service, and I'm sure perhaps Sheriff Council may want to make a comment, or someone from the department. So, no more hands up from the board. We're gonna head out to public comment. Again, if you're interested to make public comment and you're listening now, raise your hand now so we don't accidentally lose your opportunity to speak. At the moment, we have two speakers in the queue. The first person ends in the last four of 7454, and the second one is 7108. So if you're 7454, press star six to unmute. You're welcome.
Virginia, I raised my hand three times because I think you asked me to, or I felt I should, so only once. I did, I did wish to make, and I, you wish to, I think you may wish to talk to your county council. You have a rather major error in your action summary. Item L1, it says, "Discuss existing litigation in the case of Owens and County versus Humboldt EEOC, number 55020201658. No action was taken." And I could be corrected if I'm wrong, and if I made a mistake, I please ask them to. But my understanding, there is no existing litigation. So you did the correct thing by taking no action, since you couldn't, because it doesn't exist as far as I can tell. And this was just a meeting, a pre-meeting before a negotiation or settlement meeting possibly, as far as I can tell. And I, if there is existing litigation, it may not be case of Owens versus Humboldt County. It may be an EEOC case, number 55, where the federal government's against you here. You have an employee that needs to be terminated forthwith. You all know who he is. And he's engaged in some inappropriate actions. I won't mention his name this meeting. I, hopefully he will be terminated before the next meeting, and it won't be necessary to bring this into the public forum. I also wish to, thank you, Michelle. I, I just, you know, that project should have been shovel-ready, and the Garberville Vets Hall should have been shovel-ready five years ago, when I first started bringing this forward. And it's very troublesome that it's not shovel-ready at this time. And, and so, anyway, I, I again feel that, that we're basically going, this meeting is, is basically another, another continuation of the last meeting. You may wish to correct that or not, so I did want to bring that particular error to you folks, if it is an error. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And our next speaker ends in the last four of 7108, followed by 0151. So if you are 7108, press star six to unmute.
Hi, good morning. This is Bonnie Blackberry. Now I was calling about three items on the number seven priority funding request. The Garberville Complete Streets. Most of the people down here don't, really don't know what that is. Maybe there were some meetings, but I never knew about them. And the picture of the plan is so teeny that you can't really see what it is. So I hope as this moves forward, that the public is more involved than it has been in the past. Regarding the Burndale Veterans Building, it was like, great, they're getting some money. But what's happening here in Garberville? We're just feeling like we're getting shined on. We came before the board and made the pleas, and some ad hoc committee formed, and it just seems like we're going nowhere. People are getting really frustrated and upset. Then there was one for repairs to Alder Point Road. Totally, totally support that, because Alder Point Road is getting more and more traffic, and it really needs work. So, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. Our next speaker is 0151, and followed by 2902. Press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Good morning. This is Dottie Russell, Southern Humboldt. There's, on the agenda, on number nine, it says, "Regarding eligible individuals for the mainstream voucher program." I wondered if that could be discussed. I don't know if that could be pulled and then discussed, or, or at least the comment made that these voucher programs are really great, and they're really important. There's a really unfortunate part, which is a lot of the vouchers don't end up coming to Southern Humboldt. So Southern Humboldt really needs to be included somehow. So if it's just a subcommittee that evaluates where this work is going, evaluates what goes wrong when somebody applies to the housing authorities. But I have a number of people that either are tenants or have tried to be tenants for several years, over a decade, that have had their Section 8 vouchers not working out for them, because they didn't have a piece of paper they needed, but there aren't any caseworkers to help them. They have disabilities. And now, a few of them are actually being asked not to live in trailers because they're on a piece of property that is not a trailer park. So we have really understerved these people. And Southern Humboldt has people that have been homeless for many, many years, well over 10 years. And we need to do something about that. Right now, there's some people that I housed because of COVID, and I thought it was the right thing to do, but they weren't allowed to get the voucher in the motel because their behavior wasn't what they were expecting to find it easier to have them in a motel. And so it's not working. It's not working for these people, and something has to give, because I can't do it anymore. And the county is telling me I can't have somebody in a trailer someplace because it's substandard housing. But yet, there's some kind of idea for the future to have them in tents. Well, to be in a, in a travel trailer of some kind instead of a tent makes a lot more sense for these people. And, and a lot of them are in the situation that they're in because they have post-traumatic stress disorder. Something horrible's happened to them, and I was just talking to a young man yesterday and a woman that wasn't allowed to get a voucher for Garberville, that are both in a crisis situation right now. I need supports from Health and Human Services, and I need support from the voucher program down here, along with the residents of this Southern Humboldt area. If we can't get what we need, then there has to be an unincorporated area. Maybe subcommittee, something that can address unincorporated areas because...
All right, Dottie, thank you very much for your call. Pardon me? I've got too many alarms going off. All right. So, the last speaker, as long as I got my machine here right, is ending in the last four digits of 2902. And welcome, press star six to unmute.
Hello. This is Doug Battles, belonged to the VFW and the American Legion down here in Garberville. Been working on trying to get our hall back online for two years now. Been five years since it was closed. In that time, we have lost all of our revenue from the rental of the hall. We meet now in places that will accommodate our group, which is usually at another member's house. The county had a responsibility to maintain our building, did not live up to it, and they have been kicking, kicking the can down the road for five years now. The epidemic we're going through and have gone through, the hall could have been of immeasurable health to our community and to the county. Since we're so rural down here, it's almost a spot that everybody can find as a center. It's unfortunate that you have not included us in any kind of request to the state for funds so that our, our hall can be reopened and we can get back to serving our community. It's unfortunate. We're feeling pretty angry, I guess would be the word, at being dismissed more than anything else. I don't understand it myself, why you would treat rural veterans in such a manner to basically deprive them of the services that I was afforded 25 years ago and which got me into the system and saved my life. And they do not have that available to them. What are you guys doing? You know, what are your priorities? You say that you revere the veterans and thank them so much for their service, but when it comes right down to it, we're being ignored. And like I said, dismissed. It's, you know, beautification of downtown Garberville is great. I, I'm all for the tourism coming in and making money and all that. But when it's almost $7 million, give me a break. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to me where your priorities are in the county government. You know, if you have an agenda for what you want to do with that veterans' building, you should tell us. Okay, thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. All right. We have no more hands up for public comment on this consent calendar. So we'll go back to the board. Do any board members want to comment before I ask Ryan for the vote? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to comment that, you know, I understand people's frustrations and, and I just understand people's frustrations and, and want to acknowledge that with the Vets Hall in Garberville and what they see on today's agenda.
Thank you Supervisor. Anyone else care to make a comment? Seeing none, Ryan, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
N4.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, process 5-0.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the public comment portion of our meeting, which is on non-agenda items. No action can be taken on anything brought up at this timeframe. But you're welcome to call in, and again, press star nine if you would like to speak. And you will have three minutes, and we have one hand up right now, so if you're interested, please do call in. And first in our queue, we actually now have two. The first one is 0151, followed by 5069. So, Dottie, I believe that's you, and welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I wanted, I wanted to address two things. This is Dottie Russell again. One is the Avenue of the Giants Plan. I don't know how many months ago I brought it up, said we really need to be addressing the Avenue of the Giants Plan. And as far as I know, nothing's been done. If something has been done, a time's set for anybody to discuss it, it's still not happening. It is a very significant part of the, of our county, and it really has been a very long time since it's been addressed. So I'd like to have some action taken soon, if nothing else, just to be talking about what date we are going to start thinking and dealing with the Avenue of the Giants. That's one thing. And then the other thing, if I can remember, is we have, we have the general plan, and the general plan, some, some of the properties that are down in Southern Humboldt have been accepted to have a different zoning regulation on it. And that's not happening, I'm told, until the general plan is accepted or adopted. But it hasn't been adopted. So for years now, we're talking about the general plan and what's gonna happen, and we're gonna lose funding if we don't get the general plan approved. But it's not approved. And there are properties that can be used for one thing instead of another if it's approved, and it still hasn't been approved. In addition to that, I think that we have a land inventory part of the general plan that says that we have to meet the needs of our community. I know that in Southern Humboldt, we don't have that, and we're not meeting the needs of the community. And I think it's very important that we address in the general plan, very bold, very clear, that anybody living in a travel trailer, any place except for in a trailer park, will have to be excluded of our land inventory and what people are using now, because it's really not honest if you say that you're almost to what you need to fulfill the, the general plan when you're taking inventory out of the general plan that has been existing for over 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Our next speaker ends in the last four of 5069, followed by 0357. So if you are 5069, press star six to unmute. And welcome, you have three minutes. I see you're unmuted, so 5069, go ahead. They are muted again. Whoops, unmuted now. Are you there? You're 5069, can you hear me?
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Got it. About that. Morning Supervisors and staff. My name is Russ Gordon. I'm Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Just wanted to bring an issue to everyone's attention. Some of y'all may already be familiar, if you're following the state budget process. But this Friday, the governor's revised budget proposal came out. On Friday, that proposal included $100 million of new state funding going to local jurisdictions to help implement cannabis permitting programs, recognizing the substantial barriers that both county governments and licensees have faced in helping folks transition into the regulated market. Yesterday, we saw some additional information that suggests that the proposal, more specifically, would include $18 million to Humboldt County for that purpose. So that's obviously, you know, if that does pass in June and becomes part of the budget, is, is a substantial influx of resources. And has the potential to really provide needed resources, both to the county in terms of processing applications, in our understanding, looking at the proposal, is that it would also include the potential for pass-through funding directly to licensees, in particular, to perform the necessary environmental remediation and compliance necessary to, you know, fulfill all the conditions to enter the permitted market. And so reviewing that proposal, it, it looks to us right now that, that what the state is gonna require is for the county to put together a proposal for the state on how to spend that funding and can apply to up that, up to that $18 million. And so if that proposal does go through and is approved, we look forward to working with other stakeholders to put together a program that can meet the needs of the county and licensees and other stakeholders in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Russ. And our final speaker under public comment has the last four digits of 0357. And if you are 0357, I just pressed our six to unmute, and you may be ready to go. Actually, I've had a few more come in too, so, all right. If you were there, is 0357. It's your turn. There you go. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Zuzka Sabata. I have lived in Humboldt County since 2005, and I make my living here as a theater artist, teacher, and arts administrator, and I've called in to talk about the need to fund artists and arts organizations at the county level. I moved here to attend the Delarte School, was hired on, and loved the area. I have performed at the Mad River Festival in Blue Lake. I've produced my own work and toured it locally, co-founded the first theater program at Pelican Bay State Prison, and collaborated with the Wiat tribe since 2015 on multiple creative projects. Obviously, none of this would be possible without funding. I've also been asked innumerable times to create theater and perform for free, and I know many artists locally who are often asked to work for free. My good friend Jackie Dandino of the Arcata Playhouse has made it her mission to pay artists, and in so doing, with the help of many others, revived the Creamery District of Arcata in a spectacular manner, attracting more artists, more businesses, and more people to enjoy that part of Arcata. Since January, I've been working alongside Jackie at the Humboldt Creative Alliance to find new funding for the arts locally, and the news that the county is considering expanding the transient occupancy tax base and open to dispersing some of those new funds to the arts is very exciting, thank you, and very much needed right now. The arts have been disproportionately affected by the economic shutdown caused by the pandemic, but more so, there is and always has been a lack of funding in our area for baseline operational costs for arts nonprofits, which has made it challenging for arts organizations, who I work for, to maintain long-term financial stability. The pandemic has shown me two things. People miss being together, and that's what the arts do. And two, despite an understanding that the arts and culture are the fabric of our community, it's how we develop and communicate new ideas, it's one of the most effective ways of addressing social conflict and historical pain of educating, it's how we celebrate. There is a persistent viewpoint that the arts aren't essential or worthy of funding, and I think it is time to change that. Out of 53 California counties, we are in the 14 which do not support the arts from county coffers. Monies from the transient occupancy tax given to artists and arts organizations will help our whole community recover from the pandemic and evolve and thrive. I know that we value the arts. I believe it's time to fund the arts. If you would like any voices from the artist community, please get in touch with the Humboldt Creative Alliance. We will be happy to support in this process. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for calling in. And we have two more speakers. The first will be ending the last four, 7108, followed by 7454. And, um, welcome. I believe that's Bonnie.
Yes, it's me again. I wanted to just bring up the situation that we're in with this drought. Down here in Southern Humboldt, last month, we got an inch and a quarter of rain. This month, zero. We're in a serious drought, and I live in a, what, according to the road scene, Alder Point Road, high fire-risk area. So, I mean, high fire-risk area, we're in a very serious drought. And the county is permitting these... And the county is permitting these, what I call generator grows out in the hills. I have one down the road that had six generators. And I'm really concerned about those generators running in a drought in a high fire risk area, so that they can grow three crops with mixed light. And, um, yeah. So putting these generator grows out in the hills is creating a fire risk. And it's really frightening. Having five thousand gallons of water in a water tank, it's not going to take care of the problem. If there is a fire, evacuating, well, the conditions of the road, Alter Point Road, is not good. I live off the Direfield Loop, it's a gravel road. And it's, well, yeah. Hopefully, there won't be a fire. But I'd just like you all to think about putting these generator grows out in the hills at this time. So, thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie. And final hand up is seven four five four. Yes, you're, you've got their mic.
Hello, Ken Swawsky, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to welcome the people in Humboldt County who are listening to what I refer to as the Humboldt County Shit Show 2.0. I can explain a lot of the reasons why the zoning has not been completed in the general plan. And it has not. The general plan itself may have been, but it's not complete till the zoning's done. And that's because the Humboldt County Shit Show 2.0 is run by planning with the intent of making sure that the Humboldt County Green Crack permits go through for Rex Bone, Trevor Bone, the Pepper Spray Group, whatever you want to call them, friends and family, Michelle Bushnell's permits. And until that's done, I guess we won't get anything else functional in the county. Hopefully, we will change and we will no longer be the Humboldt County Shit Show 2.0. Virginia, I don't think your thirty-second warning's going off. I'm not hearing it when people are there and they seem quite surprised when you turn them off. Maybe, may, maybe I have selective hearing. I, I refer to something as, as the Rex Bone School of Lower Learning. And it basically teaches people, and I think Amy Nielsen got straight A's, how to bully people, how to run a corrupt government, how to preferential treatment to people, and how to be somebody who is not qualified to run the county. And I, I would like to thank her for her action in resigning. And I hope that you will get somebody in here who can work with people and can run this county in a non-biased, even-handed manner without having to bully people out of their jobs and ruin our county. Thank you for the opportunity to take my three minutes today, Virginia. And off we go to the Humboldt County Shit Show 2.0. And I guess we'll discuss a few more items, thank you. Sorry.
Sorry, Sid. I did want to check, I did check them, the beeper is going off. I'm seeing if I can find a better microphone service in case other people are not being able to hear it. So I do appreciate the speaker bringing that up. And at this point, that was the last of our public speakers, so we will go back and move forward with the rest of the meeting. All right, so today's special presentation is a COVID-19 update, or every other week, update. And I'm glad to have Ian Hoffman, Dr. Hoffman and the team here. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Thank you supervisors for inviting me today for the COVID-19 update. We're entering a new era with COVID-19, not quite the end of the pandemic, but the closest we've been yet. With new scientific evidence from CDC this past week that supports fully vaccinated people can go anywhere, do anything without wearing a mask, it's the best news yet for being close to the end of the pandemic. This science supports that if fully vaccinated and exposed to COVID-19, you will likely have no symptoms, or at worst, very mild cold-like symptoms, avoiding hospitalization, ICU and death. And the data supports that even among the fully vaccinated, mildly symptomatic COVID-19 is extremely rare, occurring in less than zero point zero two six percent of fully vaccinated, based on the latest data from California. This means that out of the sixty thousand plus Humboldt residents who have been fully vaccinated, only a little over a dozen would have had a positive COVID test with most of them having no symptoms or very mild symptoms. And that's exactly what we're seeing so far in reality. If you're fully vaccinated, you can be nearly certain that this is nothing worse to fear than a cold, a cold or a flu. When fully vaccinated, COVID-19 is no longer five to ten times more deadly than the flu. When you're fully vaccinated, you can go back to normal ways before the pandemic. While the state of California and Humboldt County Public Health agree with the science behind that CDC masking recommendation last week, policy requires time to catch up. And we will take the next weeks to prepare for removing the masks by vaccinating as many people as possible and thinking about how to change the masking policy that can be implemented come June fifteenth. While the science that those who are fully vaccinated do not need the mask to protect themselves, do not need to quarantine if they're exposed to COVID-19, those who are fully vaccinated do not need to worry about being hospitalized with COVID-19, there is still work to be done to develop good policy that will protect those who have not had the opportunity to be vaccinated yet, those who are not eligible for vaccination, of which there are still many. Universal masking has been one of the most effective policy measures we have had during the pandemic. Its widespread use and adoption has saved hundreds of thousands of lives in the United States. Continuing universal masking in California for the next month will allow us to continue to protect those vulnerable who are having a hard time getting vaccinated, allow those who are unsure about the vaccine to get enough information to decide if they want to vaccinate before the masks are gone and to get the newest eligibility group of twelve to fifteen-year-olds enough time to get their vaccine. After June fifteenth, we don't know exactly what the masking recommendations or requirements from the state of California will look like. But we do know that on the whole, the plan for California is to align with the CDC masking guidance as best we can. But we do suspect there will be some locations where masks will still be required and many where they might still be recommended. Currently, the CDC guidance remains the same on June fifteenth as it is today. This would mean no masks required for fully vaccinated people in nearly all public and private settings, with the exception of healthcare and some congregant settings like jails. Those who are unvaccinated would still be recommended to mask in all indoor settings that are outside the home. Businesses are governed by a set of regulations set forth by Cal OSHA, which is meeting this week to finalize their workplace rules around COVID-19 in regards to masking, vaccination, distancing and quarantine in the workplace. These Cal OSHA rules may have workplaces continue to require masking past June fifteenth, depending on what is decided by Cal OSHA governing body this week. The other areas of policy that, policy change that are very likely to come with June fifteenth are the lifting of the vast majority of the restrictions found in the blueprint for a safer economy. Lifting of the blueprint regulations will likely mean no restriction on indoor or outdoor gatherings with no capacity limits for retail and restaurants, no restrictions on meetings and events, with the exception of some of the very largest gatherings. Looking at where we are now with epidemiology of cases and where we have been in the past month in Humboldt County, it is likely we will stay in this pattern for the next several months unless vaccination rates change dramatically. What we are currently seeing in our community are pockets of unvaccinated people who are getting exposed and infected by a more contagious UK variant that is continuing to drive our case rate and positivity rate higher than the rest of the state. We thankfully have seen more testing in past months to help us determine where the virus is and to try to contain it from those who want to get vaccinated and have not yet had time, resources or the knowledge to get the vaccine. Please continue to test if you're unvaccinated or if you're vaccinated and have COVID-19 symptoms. If you need help finding a test, please call four four one five thousand. We want to make sure that as many people get a chance to get vaccinated before we take down the last public health restrictions on June fifteenth that have kept us safe. That's our goal. Our current modeling of infections in Humboldt going into the next few months show that we will likely sustain a level of case rate per hundred thousand and test positivity rate that we're seeing currently into July. And then start to see a decrease after that as the combination of fully vaccinated population and those infected by the virus leaves less options for the virus to continue to infect. This will likely also be driven by virus mutations that continue to confer an advantage to the virus by being more contagious. We have a handful of P1 or Brazilian variants in Humboldt, on par with the rest of California and the US. It's suspected that this variant, or possibly the Indian variant, will surpass the UK variant in the coming months as the virus continues to spread among the unvaccinated. This means unfortunately that our hospital system and the healthcare system will continue to need to be prepared to deal with excess hospitalizations and ICU stays that can clog our already burdened rural healthcare system for months to come. And while we are not likely to need the field hospital, like the alternate care site, it does mean we could see more out-of-county transfers for care, both for COVID and non-COVID reasons, as our hospitals deal with the excess burden of respiratory illness during a time they would not traditionally see those. Vaccination's making progress, but we could be farther along with more participation encouragement to get vaccinated, given the ongoing surplus in supply. We have more vaccine than demand currently. So there are other barriers, so there are other barriers that exist right now. We have vaccinated nearly sixty percent of the sixteen-plus adult population with at least one shot. And we're right around the state median when it comes to the percent of the population with at least one vaccine. Over seventy percent of the sixty-five-plus population is fully vaccinated in Humboldt County. Nearly fifty percent of the forty to sixty-five population is fully vaccinated, with another ten percent of the forty-plus population partially vaccinated with just one shot of the two-dose series. That means there are likely some out there, maybe around five to ten percent of the partially vaccinated population who have not come back yet for their second shot. If you're waiting to get your second dose, I urge you to do so now as we are seeing infections in partially vaccinated individuals. Partial vaccination, while it does offer some benefit, some reduction in risk of hospitalization and death, it is not strong enough to allow us to recommend the benefits of fully vaccinated status, being able to go without a mask anywhere to avoid quarantine if exposed. If you're partially vaccinated, you're still at higher risk for hospitalization and complications when compared to those who are fully vaccinated. You could still pass the virus to others and you could still continue to, and so you should still continue to mask and follow the recommendations for the unvaccinated individuals. There are many options currently if you're looking for a vaccine in Humboldt County. Please visit vaccines.gov to see which pharmacies are offering vaccines, of which there are now many in Humboldt. CVS, Rite Aid, Walgreens, Barnes, Costco, Safeway and Greens Fortuna are all offering various vaccines and can be booked online or in the stores. Myturn, the state-based website, has many options in Humboldt County as well. And you can book those now on myturn.com, dot com. Here in Humboldt, and you can also look and see if there's other appointments on Myturn in other counties now. It's not limited or restricted to our own county. If you're having trouble booking on these sites, please call the JIC at four four one five thousand to get more information about how to book an appointment. Or if you have questions about the vaccine, the JIC can answer those as well. We can direct people to ways to book appointment over the phone if they lack internet access, help set up transportation if there are barriers, get you on a list for homebound patients who need to have a vaccination team come to their home for, to get them vaccinated. If you're unsure medically if this vaccine is safe for you or you have other medical questions, now is the time to ask your physician those questions. Do not wait. I urge you to do so now before June fifteenth, before the remaining public health COVID restrictions are lifted. It's with all of the above in mind. A vaccine effort that's ready to vaccinate you if you're willing, a more contagious variant of the virus moving quickly through the unvaccinated population, other even more contagious variants likely to come in the future, public health measures such as masking and restrictions in public spaces that will be ending very soon, and the hospital impact that is likely to continue for the months to come, that we at Humboldt County Public Health and at the Emergency Operations Center strongly urge you to wait no longer. Please get vaccinated now. Let us know what barriers you have, be they physical, financial, medical, knowledge barriers. We want to remove those barriers before we remove the public health restrictions that are currently protecting the unvaccinated from COVID-19 that is circulating widely in our community. Thank you for your time today.
You, Dr. Hoffman, I'd like to ask Michelle or Sheriff Hansel if either of them have anything they wanted to add right now. We're going to turn it over to the board for questions. Sheriff?
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it, Chair Bass. You know, as we kind of transition away from the blueprint here on June fifteenth, we're also looking at demobilizing our Emergency Operations Center and, and we're, and moving towards a Department Operations Center under Public Health. So those, those discussions are happening right now between Public Health and the Emergency Operations Center. We are going to be transitioning back to our normal statuses, our, our, our EOC and our OES to prepare for the drought, prepare for wildland firefighting and the fire season coming up. And so there's a lot to prepare for that. But I just want this board to know that, that we plan on transitioning and, and closing our EOC as of June thirtieth. And so that's, that's our plan right now and, and our plan moving forward. So there's still a need to operate a local emergency. As long as a state is declaring a local emergency, there's a lot of expenses and costs that we need to request reimbursement. And still keep in mind that there are a lot of normal positions that are grant-funded through Public Health that it is necessary that we get reimbursed for those positions because, you know, people are not doing their normal grant positions. They are responding to this emergency. And, and so we need to make sure that those grants are backfilled with, with emergency dollars from the state and federal government. And as of right now, it is a full match. And so the federal government is matching dollar for dollar that, that we are spending on this emergency as far as employee costs. So, so it's very important that we keep that right now. Obviously, the county is looking at expenses. We are reducing where we can, overtime is reduced dramatically. And so we will be looking at, at, you know, those ongoing costs. And again, transitioning, you know, so we can continue to manage this event and this emergency beyond June thirtieth, because there's definitely still a need, testing as well as, you know, the vaccinations, as well as tracking all of the, of the current COVID cases. And so definitely still a need there, but definitely transitioning to a different side. So just wanted to keep the board up to date on that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I would just, I'd just add, if I may, that we're looking at what the Joint Information Center will look like as well. And so we're thinking that, you know, comes June thirtieth, there will still be a need for Joint Information Center for the public to be able to call and, and get answers to questions and find resources and whatnot, so that, that will likely very much still continue. It just might look a little different in terms of the staffing and whatnot. So people can count on that still.
All right, thank you. I think I'll turn over the board before you get to public to see if there are any board members who have questions or for the team. Okay, if no one's going to ask, I do have one and you might have kind of covered this. You know, I, I know I sent you something about people not wanting to take part in contact tracing. And I'm wondering what you can tell us more about that and how we might be able to help? Because, you know, personally, if I found out I could have exposed someone, I would want to protect that person and whoever else is, might be in the way. So it's hard for me to understand the general reluctance unless it's because of government, you know, in interfering in, you know, because we seem to be everywhere right now at all levels. But, so I don't know if you can add a little, shed a little more light on, you know, why that is and what can we potentially do to help? Because that seems to me to be a really something that shouldn't be that hard to get past. And obviously, it is, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bass. We have been running up against a lot more reluctance and participation in the contact tracing and the investigations for COVID-19. And it's not something that's new. It's definitely been there all along, but it does feel like maybe getting a little more pervasive. I, I'd say there's likely a lot of reasons for that. Probably at the top of the list is just the general COVID fatigue that everyone has ready to be done with this. Um, I think there's probably some fear as well. Um, people scared of what would happen if they do, you know, have to tell their contacts and, and identify that, you know, they were positive and that they exposed other people. You know, I just want to reassure everyone, this is a very confidential process. We do not, um, release any information about, uh, the, the positives or the contacts. Um, so it's, it's really, um, you know, something that, that can be relied upon from public health side that, that confidentiality will remain. You know, I absolutely agree. I mean, I think that if we had more participation, we would very likely slow the case rates that we're seeing right now, could get our case rates down to a lower level, you know, potentially, um, move into the yellow tier before the blueprint goes away, um, which, which is something I think all of us would like to see. Um, but I, I've, based on the current caseloads that we're seeing and the acceleration of the cases that have happened over the past month, um, without participation in, in the investigations, it's hard to see that happening. Um, and, and then, you know, the other piece is going back to, um, what we've known all along about this disease, which is that, uh, the, you know, we're, what we really want to prevent, you know, early on was this overwhelming surge into the hospitals. And we have passed that point, but that doesn't mean that this disease isn't still impacting people's lives um, very dramatically. And we are still seeing, uh, hospitalizations, we're seeing hospitalizations in young people. Um, we're seeing hospitalizations in ICU stays and younger folks in the past month. Um, and we're seeing people sicker with the disease, younger people, even children getting the illness now. And, um, that's something that we'd like to prevent. So, um, encourage everyone to participate in investigations. And, uh, I think what we could all do is just to get that message out there as the leaders of this community, um, that, that's something that we encourage and we, um, would want people to do.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Supervisor Madron?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I appreciate, uh, uh, thank you Sheriff Hansel for, uh, your description about the, uh, possible emergency declaration. Uh, as always, I realize there's always pros and cons to these things. And we certainly don't want to trigger something that would cause, uh, excess cost to the county without the benefits, et cetera. Uh, so I know we're always weighing those kinds of things. Um, the Yurok Tribe did, uh, pass a emergency declaration the other day, uh, in particular because the Klamath River is in really dire shape. But I think as we see this drought continue, um, apparently it's the driest year in a hundred and twenty-six years on record. We're going to see all kinds of other things happening in Humboldt. So I don't know if it's the right thing to do a declaration locally or not. Uh, and I know that's your, your purview, but I just want to be sure that we're looking at, you know, all the various, uh, costs and benefits of doing that. Um, and, you know, if there are tremendous benefits because we've done it, we can get all kinds of funding uh, to help, uh, deal with these issues, then that would be a good reason to do it. But, um, you know, I appreciated your thoughts on that. And I just wanted to share that the Yurok Tribe has done that. And they're hoping that Humboldt County will also support whatever appropriate measures we need to be doing to protect our rivers and, uh, and cultures. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Any other hands up? So we will go on to the public comment. If you want to comment on this item, please call now because we have one speaker whose hands are, hand is up. And, um, if no more show up, then this will be our one speaker. And, uh, seven, four, five, four. It's your turn and we'll see if, if you can hear the beep this time. I moved the thing around.
Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm quite used to being the one speaker. Um, I'm looking at my vaccine card and I was, got my second Moderna from, uh, McKinneyville, uh, Health Clinic there, five, five of twenty-one. And my question for, uh, your, your staff there i- is, is it ten days after I get that shot that I have what you consider to be sufficient protection? Or is it fourteen? Am I already crossed the line? What I'll be doing with my card, uh, you know, they call it a passport or something. I think it's a consideration is unfortunately they, uh, they wrote some of this in a really light blue and I'm going to take it back to my, uh, my health provider and get it written in black so I can make copies. But I intend to, uh, right now intend to go ahead and put that into something like a fishing license holder, which I will display to the public. Uh, I, uh, that's voluntary. Uh, I'm not violating my own HIPAA thing by showing I've had that. But I think it's a common courtesy to eliminate people's angst out there. Uh, I know somebody who was in high school with me, uh, you think a year ahead of me, and, uh, played football with him, a really nice person, and he died from this. Um, a healthy person. So, uh, I strongly, strongly recommend that, uh, you go out and get your vaccines. If you don't and a new strain comes along and you pass on or die, I consider that to be, uh, natural selection. Uh, it's just, it's, uh, I hate the term no brainer. It's just terrible. But on the other hand, uh, uh, you're, you're jeopardizing yourself, you're jeopardizing your family, uh, your friends and especially the elders in our groups who may not be able to be vaccinated or for some other reason, uh, you know, can't have the benefit of this. So I can't speak any stronger about getting vaccinated. Um, and I, I, I will not be wearing my mask unless asked to do so after my date of my vaccine. Uh, I may be turned away or I may put it on. I guess that's my discretion going into Costco. I was the first person or one of the first people with my wife wearing one in Costco when Dr. Fauci told us not to wear them. And now it's a privilege to be one of the first people for, fortunately to go ahead and put the mask aside. And I will keep my, uh, my vaccines updated as recommended by the CDC and, uh, and our local health provider. And I, I'm, hopefully we will find out soon how often those have to happen. I believe this may be an ongoing thing. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on this particular topic. And, uh, and Ken Swawski highly recommends, and of course, nobody, people laugh at me like Rex does in the public forum, but a few people take me seriously and I highly recommend, uh, couldn't recommend anything higher than to get this vaccine. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this, probably the most important issue on the agenda today and the privilege to possibly to be the only speaker.
All right. Thank you. And there are no other hands up. So with that, we will go back to the board. I will go back to, uh, Dr. Hoffman. Uh, I did hear a question that had been asked and if you wanted to.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Sheriff Bass. Um, yeah, so fourteen days after the last dose of whatever series you're getting. So if it's a two-dose series, it's fourteen days after the second dose. If it's a single, uh, dose, like the Johnson and Johnson, it would be fourteen days after that first dose.
All right. Thank you. So any final comments or questions from the board, Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bone?
I think you, Chair Bass. So, uh, yeah, I do have a couple of comments and some, one of my takeaways from what was discussed here is really this, we're coming into a place where masking, um, will be lifted. And I think what I'm hearing very clearly is that if you're not vaccinated yet, that day is coming soon. And, um, you have been, we have all been protected, uh, from masks, uh, by masking from this virus. Um, um, and that protection will go away. And I, I, I think the risk then will be elevated quite a bit for those who are unvaccinated. And really this is, it's, um, this is a month away. I mean, this is, it's coming, coming up fast. And the other thing that's happening too, and I, I think that you, you touched on it, is that we're having uh, variants of, of, of the virus that are more contagious and more virulent. And we're also finding that there are compounding issues with multiple, or there has been, um, uh, evidence of compounding issues with multiple in, uh, infections. We also know that if you've been infected, that, um, that the, that the vaccines are much better, uh, with regards to protection, uh, in terms of immunity than having had it. Um, and so that is something I think we really need to, uh, because there, there are folks who really believe that, um, you know, that I've had it before, so I don't need this, this vaccination. This is, I, I think this is a, a myth and I think we really need to be strong on this. So I, I think the, the message that I carry often is that this, that the risk is, is only increasing for the unvaccinated. And that include, and that especially includes younger people. And we are seeing that happening, uh, in terms of hospitalizations and pretty serious illnesses amongst younger folks. And I don't, you know, I mean twenties, thirties, forties and fifties, you know, that where we thought that we're, you know, relatively, you know, rare, it's becoming much more, uh, uh, stronger responses related to hospitalizations and, and ICU issues. So I just want to, you know, in, really emphatically, uh, ha, you know, ask people to really consider very strongly that this is important. And, and also the understanding that not being vaccinated, um, in some, you know, ways is also, uh, a bit of a privilege. Um, you know, i- if we were in, if, uh, drop ourselves, uh, i- any one of us into a space where, uh, there is a more, uh, India or Brazil or other places where the, where the variants are stronger and those are the ones that are coming here, where it's everywhere. People are re, you know, the, y- you're, your motivation to get vaccinated would be much, much higher. And so in a place where we can kind of lean on other people to have been vaccinated, I, I think the time has come where we really, it's, 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 um, we really need to think about, are we leaning on everybody else or are we taking responsibility, uh, in ourselves? Um, no one wants to get stuck by a needle. Um, no one wants to take medicine in general or, you know, the, but nonetheless, the, the, the alternative is, is, um, is something that I think we really should try very, very hard to avoid. So I really appreciate this, uh, update this week. I just want to pu- put myself on the record as someone who, who really wants, uh, our, our community as fully vaccinated as possible. Again, it's not just a responsibility to yourself. You're right about, you know, we are seeing people going into the hospital. That's taking the place of other folks that need emergency or other services. People are getting sent out of the area. I mean, it's impacting our society. It's in, we're still in the orange, so it's impacting our businesses. Um, it's just part of our personal responsibility and I appreciate, um, uh, the messaging I've been hearing from other supervisors out on the radio and every other places about that, those responsibilities. And so thanks a lot for all your hard work on this. And, and also I really appreciate the efforts. Not everybody, it's convenient to get vaccinated and we are acknowledging that and working very hard to get people to, you know, reach out to anyone who wants to get a vaccination. I've put it out there, if there's anyone in Humboldt County who feels like there is impo- it's hard for them to get a vaccination, I personally will help you do that. I think any of our supervisors would do that for you. Any of our staff, uh, four four one five thousand, call that number. There will be someone that will help work around your schedule, work, you know, around your space. Please, uh, reach out. We will help you do that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Supervisor Madron for his, part of his apology today. And I also wanted to thank him for bringing up the, uh, the drought. Uh, two weeks ago, four Central Valley Counties, um, claimed a, uh, emergency. And what that prompted last week, I think a week ago today or Monday, there is a state emergency drought order and Humboldt County was included in that, which allows us and openness, opens the door to all that funding and stuff. So I, it's pretty all-inclusive. So I wanted to, um, geez, I'm thanking the governor for something, but I want to thank the governor for that. Um, yeah, and, um, I appreciate Supervisor Wilson's impassioned plea. I'm one of those guys on the radio, I guess, quite a bit, um, um, telling people. And a, a couple of weeks ago, I said something about, I get numerous things every day telling me about all the reasons we shouldn't get vaccines. So somebody called NASCAR. That's, that's one week's worth of twenty-seven-year-old doctor dead. These are, these are all things that come out. Thank God for social media because just like public comment, it's all true. Um, so I think as we move forward, I think our, uh, health department, I think part of this is there's a wide swath of younger people that believe all this stuff. And we can say, but, so I don't know if we diffuse it. I don't know if we started the, get our campaign that people needed to do this too late because there is a wide swath. Because I get asked every day, heard you on the radio, Rex, why should I? And I can tell you one thing, if you got vaccinated, you're not going to the hospital and you're not dying. I don't mind getting sick. I just don't like hospitals. And I'm just taking it. I don't think I'm going to like death either. But anyway, um, that's just a shot in the dark. Compared to some people, we're really going to like it, but anyway, for me, but, um, I'm just saying as we move forward, maybe our campaign should be debunking the BS. Because I don't think a nineteen-year-old kid took on monkey tendencies after he got his COVID shot. But that is actually put out there publicly. So I mean, I don't think people believe that, but I think they believe the more mainstream stuff. So I think that's something we have to address with all the publicity people we have and telling people that, you know, and then the other thing is, is it is, um, up to us to tell people. And I, I've got friends that aren't going to get it and we've had many a comment, comments about it, talks about it, everything else. I am going to respect their decision. I'm not going to like it. I'm not going to, uh, condone it. But I think, um, in the long run, it's the only way we're going to kick this thing in the, in, in, in the ass. And I just, my, my big thing is some of us are old enough to re- know somebody that had polio. It was a little bit older and things like that and still later on in life, still had braces and everything else. And I think the best commercial I ever saw was it showed a grandmother holding her granddaughter. She looks up at her arm and says, what's that? Says, well, that's my vaccine, my polio vaccine. She says, why don't I have one? She said, because this one worked. Well, think about it, you guys. Risk versus reward. We do it every time we get in our car and drive somewhere. Anytime we do any of those risks versus reward, and I think the, the reward far outweighs the risk. So I'm not saying do what's right, do what's good. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone.
I make a comment?
I'm hopping.
Um, thank you so much Supervisor Bone. I, I really appreciate those comments all of us do here at Public Health and the EOC who are involved in this longstanding operation to try to beat COVID. Um, I, you know, we've talked about it, the very, very, very long list of reasons why people might not be getting the vaccine at this point. Um, I think, you know, we're at a stage where we can really get, get to a large majority of those. Some of them have those financial barriers. They have transportation issues. Um, and some of them have knowledge barriers. And I think that's exactly what you're talking to Supervisor Bone. And, um, all of us have the knowledge now that we can spread, which is that the vaccine prevents severe disease, hospitalization and death. And it's extraordinarily good at that. And it's pretty darn good at preventing even mild symptoms. Uh, I mean, I think that's another thing that people should know. Um, you know, you bring up polio, uh, vaccine. And, and I think one of the things that some people are starting to talk about is, well, why should I get it if it doesn't prevent a hundred percent of disease, um, like polio vaccine? Uh, and this is, you know, not all diseases are the same. Um, we, we'd get flu shots every year despite the fact that the flu, um, you know, it's not eradicated. It's, it's not the same kind of disease. And COVID and coronavirus, um, coronaviruses are out there and have been out there forever. And they have caused, uh, the vast majority of colds in our lifetime. And this coronavirus will continue to do that. Uh, and it will continue to cause severe disease in folks who are unvaccinated. And it will cause very little to no disease in folks who are, are unvaccin- or sorry. It'll, it'll cause, uh, you know, very mild to no symptoms in those who are vaccinated. And it has the potential to cause severe disease and death in those who are unvaccinated. So, um, you know, that's the message. And I think that if people have questions, I think the other thing we can all do at this point is if people are really questioning the medical side of it, is it effective? Is it safe? Um, ask them to talk to their doctor because I think that's something that's been difficult in this, uh, pandemic and response and the vaccination response is that this vaccine's not in the typical location that people get. this vaccine is not in the typical location that people get their vaccine. It's not in their doctor's offices. So they're going to these places, they don't traditionally get medical care, pharmacy, a mass vaccination site. So, you know, talking to your doctor, ask your doctor, should I get this vaccine? And I would hope that that doctor would give them their strong recommendation. Yes, this is the right vaccine for you. You should do this for your health, for your family, for your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, through the chair, Dr. Hoffman. I was wondering if we have, on Monday, I see we had sixty-three positives. And I'm wondering if we have a comparison with those positives of how, if there were any of those positives that were vaccinated. People like group and so, you know, we're having sixty-three positive and none of them were vaccinated. People like to hear that kind of thing.
Yeah, you know, we're not tracking it down to the number because it is, it's a difficult thing to track. We are tracking a lot of numbers. The state's keeping track of it. And so I talked about that number of zero point zero two six percent of folks who are fully vaccinated or have come back positive. That's, you know, since Jan, since December when the, or I guess it's since mid-January when people started becoming fully vaccinated up until today. So it's, it's extraordinarily low and, and those numbers do fit. I, I, you know, I think what I can say is that, you know, the, that, the number of those are, are definitely reflected in that, that number. So out of those sixty people, you know, probably none of them were vaccinated if, you know, of the last week or two weeks, you know, maybe one or two people. So, you know, out of the well over a hundred people who have been vaccinated. So you're, you're the, the numbers hold true, what we're talking about for that zero point zero two six percent, we're, we're not seeing a lot larger than that. And again, I think we just talked about this last week and the last couple of times, you know, some of those people were just catching because they are healthcare workers who have to test. And, and so, you know, they have no symptoms. They have, you know, they, they feel perfectly fine, whereas in the past, the majority of those people would have felt ill.
Thank you. I just had, I wanted to ask one more question. One Supervisor Bushnell made me think. So I know we've heard that quite a few partially vaccinated folks have been testing positive. So my, my question is, if they've been partially vaccinated and then they end up testing positive, what is the course for them? I mean, should they still go get that second vaccine? Do they have to start something over? What, what would you be telling people if they are in that position? If, if we're trying to send them in the right direction?
Yeah. So the data on partially vaccinated, again, goes back to trials, goes back to data that's been collected throughout the vaccine effort nationally and statewide. So, you know, there is protection. I want people to understand that one dose will protect them to a certain degree, but we see still a higher rate of hospitalization and death in that group than, than compared to the fully vaccinated. So if you become infected between your two doses, the recommendation is complete that isolation period and and then, you know, get the recommended vaccine at the time that, you know, is, it would be recommended to be due for you. If it's due during that isolation period, that ten-day isolation period, then you could do it, you know, directly afterward or as soon as you feel better from, from the illness itself. So there's no need to wait any time other than we, you know, we don't want people to go to a medical appointment while they're on isolation to get something like a vaccine.
And it also doesn't, just because they received one shot and then they got sick, doesn't mean that they don't need that second shot because they also have had the virus, you know, because like, I think one of the, that I just could have been Supervisor Bone mentioned that, you know, I mean, people think that because they've had it, they won't get it again. Maybe it wasn't Rex, but somebody did and it's like, that's the wrong thing to think, so.
Yeah. You, you know, what, what we're finding based on the studies is that, you know, natural immunity, while it does create a, an immune response, the vaccine response is looking to be about ten times stronger. The antibodies are nearly ten times stronger. And there's, it's activating, especially that second dose is really activating a memory for that, that we're hopeful. Could be much more long-lasting than we originally thought. It could be, you know, years instead of a year or two. So we're gonna keep studying that and, and see if booster shots are needed down the line. But it's looking more and more positive that that, that might not be needed in the short term. And definitely that the vaccine boosts immunity more than natural infection. So, so yeah, if you, you know, combine a shot and then a natural infection, I don't, it's not as good as getting both shots. So you should still get that second shot.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. For, for me, there's, there's, there's a simple statistic, just Humboldt County based. You know, we've had about four thousand positive cases for COVID that we know of. And about forty deaths and about maybe a hundred and seventy-five hospitalizations, right? That's out of the four thousand people who've had the COVID or had COVID. We've had over forty thousand people vaccinated. And from that, not a single death, not a single hospitalization. So it's a, you know, on balance, that's, that's a, you know, the risk of of hospitalization and death is extremely higher when you get COVID than it is if you get the vaccination. It's just, it's just in the numbers in Humboldt County by, by itself. There isn't, there's just, there's just orders of magnitude difference in terms of risk. And so just in our community, much less the national and international statistics on this. So, thanks again for your effort.
All right, seeing no other hands up, we can let Dr. Hoffman and Michelle and the rest of the team get off this call and do what they do best and what, what they constantly do. Working to keep us as safe as possible, so. Thank you. The update. All right, so that moves us on to departmental items. And the first one comes to us from the CIO's office. And it's regarding the potential adoption of revised rules of the Board of Supervisors. Anna Ceyon Nielsen, I'll pass this off to you first.
Thank you Chair Bass. Before your board today are revised rules of the Board of Supervisors. The revised rules reflect modification that address areas identified by the ad hoc committee or ad hoc group, excuse me, which is comprised of Supervisors Bass and Madron. The modification to the rules include an introduction and purpose statement, responsibilities, roles and duties of all supervisors that are more clearly defined, parliamentary procedures that have been expanded to include Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Statement of Conflict section has been expanded as well. Other new portions of the rules include legislative and quasi judicial decisions, which also provides procedures for conducting public hearings. And last, another new addition to the board rules are principles and standards of ethical conduct, which ties into a future discussion your board will be having later today on the Code of Conduct. This concludes the staff report and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I did want to say that, and I'm only speaking as part of the supervisor duo who is trying to tackle this. I really appreciate the efforts that staff and others bring to the table to enumerate the concerns and add areas that we did not consider. I really appreciated what I read, I think. And I did speak with you yesterday about whatever questions I had. So I just wanted to say thank you for the thoroughness. And it certainly is a lot more, I think, in-depth than others have been and which is what it should be in this day and age, so. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank staff for their work in helping us put this together. Supervisor Bass and myself certainly did a fair amount of work in trying to review lots of documents and offer suggestions. But staff did a fantastic job of really compiling this and reformatting it. You know, on the agenda, there is the board rules that we have, the draft in front of us today. And then there's also the previous set of board rules which were adopted in 2017. And it looks like we changed just about everything, but really all that is, is a bunch of formatting changes to the document. And as a whole, this draft document really is very close to what was in 2017. It's not really changed that much, except for the places that our chief administrative officer, county administrative officer has pointed out in, in her presentation. So there were some additions and some changes, but it's not nearly as big as it seems. If you sit there and you compare the two documents, a lot of it was really formatting changes. So anyway, I want to thank staff for their help with all this.
So I would like to ask any of the supervisors if they had a question. I know our Ceyon Nielsen is on. And I also see another, another picture that's popped up on the screen. Is this part of, I'm not sure if he's part of, somebody we worked with, Mr. Reed, Amy, can you help me?
Chair Bass, he is with the Code of Conduct presentation that's.
Didn't want to ignore him or anything. Just wanted to be sure. All right Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, I really appreciate this. I don't fit, see any specific changes that I think are needed. I do have just a process question on the procedure for conduct for public hearings. It's just a sort of a or, order of, of how things go. There's the, there's the chair announces the item, there's declarations by supervisors of conflict, then there's the staff presentation. And then the staff will present other communication. The appellant then has their turn. And then it goes, then in this thing, it kind of goes straight into public comment. And then the board has discussion. Where is there, is there a spot in this order where the, where the board would have clarifying questions? And where might that go in that space?
Through the chair, that's item G on page nine.
Okay. So that, but so there is not a, so you, we would have clarifying questions, then we'd have response from staff and then we go into deliberations. So G kind of is like a, is a multi faceted, okay, okay, I appreciate that. Because sometimes I've seen where the board has questions kind of after the staff presentation and, you know, kind of before the public. And so I was just wondering, that's, that's kind of how we've done it. But I, I'm amenable to just having it all at one fell swoop, too.
Supervisor Wilson, I don't want, I'm sorry if I interrupted. In C, you had mentioned after the staff presentation, and we do have supervisors may direct any questions to staff regarding the presentation through the chair. So I think, I think that is very similar. I see Supervisor Madron, looks like I saw that too. But so it is there, but it was kind of listed at the end of the sentence, so.
Okay, I appreciate that clarifying, that clarification. I really do appreciate too, the, the findings element of this, which is I on here, where is if we deviate really strongly from the staff recommendations that we, that findings are brought back for review because we need to, we, we, we should have a habit of doing that. And, and I'm glad it's codified in this in this document. So, yeah, I'm, and I, and I appreciate also the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. I think that that's definitely a simplified and, and and good, good way to go relative to the Robert's Rules of Order. So, and I appreciate the, what's been set before us here. I did notice there's not really any process for amending motions, but I think that's what's simplified about it. But I also think it's great to have this clarification about the, the idea of of calling the question in some format to that. And it's not just a supervisor can call the question. It really is, the calling of a question means it goes to a vote as to whether or not the, the the subject matter ends at that point. It's just not a declaration, a declaration by a single supervisor and then we move forward. So I appreciate that there's some process to that. So, thank you so much for my opportunity to comment.
Anya Supervisor Bone. Can you turn on your microphone? Please.
I make a motion, we accept the board rules as presented.
I'll second. Okay, so we can still have conversation, but that's good because now the public knows what we're talking about. So when we go out for public comment. That was a question I have for staff, but I'll wait to, for others to ask. Supervisor Wilson, is your hand just still up or do you have another question?
I did not have another question.
All right Supervisor Bone, did you have anything more you wanted to add in that?
You guys did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks. A team, including the CIO.
Great team.
Anya Supervisor Bushnell, do you have a question at this time or comment you'd like to make?
I just wanted to make the comment that I appreciate the update and the clarification. I was able to ask the CIO's office several, several questions. And for being a brand-new board member, it's very helpful for me. And then additionally to have the set of additional rules that governs our, guides our board. I really appreciate it.
And Supervisor Madron, do you have any questions or any comments you want? Because I do have a few questions I wanted to ask, but let me make sure. And I would like to ask my husband, okay, and I'm probably having more questions to ask just because I've been chairing the board meetings this year in a time with Zoom, which has been really, it's been different, but it's, it's getting kind of used to it. But some of the questions I had, and I just wanted to get these out. One, you know, I think the, the process for the public hearings is good. At some point in time, if not now, but in the future, can we have a definition provided for us by county council of how in-depth the ex parte contacts need to be stated? Because I think I've, I mean, I've heard, oh, I talked to this person, but I think it's supposed to go more in depth. I'm not sure, so that would be helpful for me. See, I really like seeing the, the timeframe put in the meeting of the two and a half minutes and then the thirty seconds. The last set had basically that the chair could decide to give any other public speaker extra time if they thought they should. And I always thought that was a problem, so I appreciate that that is now not in there. And I think it's good that we have something codified on the agenda item process because, you know, it's not just us, it's staff and, you know, department heads and, you know, everyone trying to get everything in, in time. And it makes it really difficult on our staff in this office to try to publish the agenda and do everything else they need to do. So I'm glad to see that in there. And then my last question is how this might be related on page four. It talks about, you know, applicability. I never can say that right. And so these rules are applicable to all appointed and elected officials of the county. And so I guess my question, and maybe it's not to be answered today, but I know how this applies to us and how we operate, but how does this apply to the other electives and department heads in the county? I, I don't have as much clarity on that. So, sorry, ask all those questions again, but I just wanted to get them out there. So I mean, I like the draft. I can, I can certainly support it today. I just would like some more clarification down the road if that's, you know, I'd appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna go to public comment. If that's, you know, yes, County Council Blingsley.
I thank you Chair, I just wanted to offer some guidance on, on the ex parte rules. Obviously, it's hard to define every situation, but the purpose of the ex parte rules is that so the public can learn any information that a supervisor might receive individually. so the public can learn any information that a supervisor might receive individually that isn't part of the public agenda item that might influence their decision. So if any board member received information that isn't publicly known, that it's going to be part of their decision-making process, that's something they should announce during the ex parte portion. And I think if you follow that general guidance, that will cover all the situations that you may come across.
Okay, so it doesn't have to go to the extreme of, if you talk to them, what time you talk to them, and any, you know, I mean, I just didn't know how far down in the details to go, but I think generally speaking, what you said makes sense.
Yeah, I think the critical inquiry is, did you receive information that's going to affect your decision? And if you did, you need to share what it was.
All right, thank you. And I know Supervisor Wilson deals with ex parte a lot, I'm sure, with Coastal Commission, and his hand is up, so I wanted to recognize him.
Thanks. Yeah, we, I mean, on that particular commission, there is, you know, there's some pretty strict rules, which is, which is why so many commissioners don't, don't do ex parte for a lot of, some don't do any, some only do it regionally. And we have written forms that we fill out for that, which I suppose we could consider. I have just a question about the, the time given to the applicant and appellants during the public hearing, and it just says that they get an equal amount of time, but are, I mean, is there any sort of limitation or expectation, or does the chair or somebody let them know what that expectation might be before a meeting? Just as an example, again, going back to the Coastal Commission, oftentimes it's like 15 or 20 minutes. That's what you get, you know, you can reserve time for rebuttal, but there is, there are limits to that, and I'm just kind of wondering if we consider that, or, or how we might approach that.
Thank you. I like, I was gonna, I should have asked that, or I could have asked that, I thought of it. Um, CIO Nielsen.
So I'd like to try to answer your question, Supervisor Bass, about the applicability, and then I'll move to Supervisor Wilson's question about timing in a public hearing. So the applicability section, there are actually portions of this, the rules of the Board of Supervisors that do apply to staff. In particular, on page 14, there's an agenda item process portion where departments need to adhere to the CIO Agenda Item Deadlines Memo. So that's referenced there, so that's why appointed and elected officials would also need to be responsible to review and adhere to this. But as well as, staff also need to adhere to Rosenberg's Rules of Order as they participate in a meeting, as well as there's a portion on staff attendance. So I just wanted to address that. And then in terms of timing for a public hearing, you know, that's something that the board chair can help set up at the beginning of a public hearing.
All right, Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, it might be nice, and we can talk about the, or what, after public comment, but it might be nice to, if we could add a sentence that really, that delineates that responsibility to the chair and staff to give, to, you know, give some expectations to the, to the applicant slash appellant before the meeting, what that might be. That would be helpful, I think.
Well, and I, as, as current operating chair, I guess, or acting, whatever, as current chair, I agree, and I know I have asked for that information before, and sometimes it's been, how much time do you need? But I've seen it, it's been really difficult, and I would like to have something that is also a set procedure in figuring it out even prior to the meeting, because it'd be nice for the applicant to know, and, or the appellant to know what their timeframe is prior to the meeting, I think. And, but I think you have a good suggestion, Supervisor Bone.
I think you're gonna have a hard time telling the applicant or appellant what their timeframe is when public comment can, when we're asking them, asking them sometimes to respond to public comment or, or claims that are made, and if we don't give them time to react to the claims that are made, again, knowing public comment is always fully 100% right. But I mean, without giving them the chance to respond, I don't think we get a fair balance of what the project is. So if we limit it to 15 minutes and we have four hours of public testimony, it's kind of hard for them to react to all that, be it applicant or appellant.
I would suggest we have a time for them, they can, so that they can respond to those. So how that goes in the 15 minutes? We can certainly work out. Jeffers, County Council Billingsley.
Thank you, Chair. I believe DG, D subset G has that provision. After the applicant has had their testimony and the response, then the board can, the public hearing portion is closed, but the board can still ask questions and get responses from either people who presented public testimony or from those that gave presentations. So I think really what you're trying to figure out is how much time there should be for the actual presentations themselves, which is difficult, because obviously some items are much more complex than others. Something like Teragen would require more, more time than something that's maybe a smaller application.
What was Teragen?
And I'd say one of the important things in County Council Billingsley, you kind of touched on it, was, you know, in the past, when we asked those questions of people who have given testimony or of the appellant, it hasn't necessarily stayed on the item that we're asking about. It has, it's often has become like a whole other presentation of its own. So part of it is just trying to, you know, remind people that, you know, they certainly can clarify anything that was heard that was wrong, but we will, we will, we will flush this out before we have our, like, our first appeal hearing, I'm sure. We've spent a lot of time figuring that one out. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Might as well go there. We do have a motion, and that's unseconded. To accept this. And I'm clicking my participant box, but nothing is showing up. What have we done wrong? Challenges of Zoom, Ryan, help me out here.
Yes, Chair, we do have one member of the public that would like to comment. The phone number is ending in 7454.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm just curious why I'm no longer being able to pull up my, my participants. All right, so you said, was it?
Seven, four, five, four.
All right, so seven, four, five, four, you have your three minutes, welcome.
Homeland Security is working with me to block access to me, and I'd like to let you know about that one. Basically, I find this great that you guys are updating this. One of the main guiding principles that you have here on page 2A, which is, is intended to enhance public participation. And I think that's, that's a great thing. I did want to make mention of, of repeated violations by Rex Bone, and it happened just now. I think, what was Teragen was the question. It should have been through the board, I would like to ask the question, what, what is Teragen? Earlier in the meeting, he should have addressed the chair. He says, when any supervisor is about to speak, they shall address the chairperson. So that, yes, through the chair, I would like to violate Ken Stowinski's First Amendment rights by mocking and laughing at him. I understand that this violates the intent of this rules of the supervisors, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So, you know, you really need to enforce these. I didn't see anything for sanctioning and monitoring or for muting somebody when they continually interrupt the public, when they are trying to have an enhanced participation in the process. And I highly recommend you find some, some kind of a stick. Maybe I missed it, it's a long document. There's a lot of interesting things on conflict of interest. We may talk about that a little later, and the biggest thing is a perception of conflict of interest. And there's all kinds of FPPC determinations or whatever, and those people really make very little difference. Some of the things are even determinations by very credible attorneys may not make a difference, but it comes down to, is there a potential to have a perception of a conflict of interest? And that's what I find to be the overriding guiding principle, as far as when somebody should not participate in the public process. And again, I don't have time to discuss this right now, but I do believe we have another topic which will enable me to do so. So again, I strongly support you moving forward with your half. You may consider going ahead and, and right away considering to put some kind of a, and, and please point it out if it's in there. I would request Virginia S. staff to point out where there is any kind of a stick involved should someone continue to badger or mock or laugh at or interrupt the public when they're trying to participate. Thank you for my opportunity to speak, and thank you for not interrupting me.
Right, thank you. And I found my list of panelists again and participants. I'm not sure what happened, Ryan, but thank you for helping me out on that one, and there are no other hands up. So with this, we will return to the board. We do have a motion and a second, and we can certainly have further conversation, or we can vote. Is anyone here for further conversation? Any of the supervisors? All right.
The chair, no.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. So with that, Ryan, would you please do the roll call vote?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, passes 5-0.
All right, thank you, Ryan. So now we'll move on to the second departmental item, and it comes to us from Planning and Building, and it's a status update on the regional, the draft regional action, climate action plan. There you go. Can't say if I know what I meant. Director Ford, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Members of the board, good morning. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. Joining me are Connor McGinn and Michael Richardson. And what we want to do this morning is just give you an update of the status of the preparation of the Climate Action Plan. And to do that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. McGinn. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Ford. I'm gonna share my screen. I have a brief 10-minute presentation. Can everyone see?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the purpose of today's report is just to provide a high-level introduction to the Humboldt Regional Climate Action Plan. This is more of a recap of what we've been up to over the last couple of years working on this project, and to update the board on cap activities to date, the current status and what we have left to accomplish before we bring the Climate Action Plan to the board for adoption. This is the goal for the Climate Action Plan project. We hope to end up with this process with a regional climate action plan adopted by each jurisdiction. That would be the county and the seven cities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout Humboldt County. And it's worth mentioning, though, the phrase "climate action" could have a number of different meanings. In this context, we're focusing on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Here's a high-level timeline of the process so far. The regional cap was launched in 2018, and we brought together a working group consisting of staff from the seven cities in the county. And around that time, we, the board and the city councils from the seven cities adopted an MOU to start this collaborative regional process to work on this regional document. And we've completed a number of the key deliverables for a climate action plan. And so, and looking ahead, we're looking to complete a first draft sometime in the next couple of months. And once we have a draft, we'll begin the sequel process. These are the three components of a climate action plan. A greenhouse gas inventory, which is sort of like a snapshot of greenhouse gas emissions within a given jurisdiction. A greenhouse gas reduction target, which is the goal for the Climate Action Plan, and then, of course, a set of strategies or policies to reduce those emissions. I'm gonna present briefly some data from the 2015 countywide greenhouse gas inventory, which was conducted by Redwood Coast Energy Authority. So the number-one source of emissions in Humboldt County is transportation. Another significant source would be stationary combustion. That refers to the combustion of fuels like natural gas and propane, primarily consumed with building energy. And electricity consumption is another major source of emissions, as well as livestock, industrial sources, and a number of less significant sources of emissions in Humboldt County. Here's a breakdown of emissions by jurisdiction. So the unincorporated counties coming in at around 60%. And this graph, this pie chart shows an emissions breakdown that tracks pretty closely to the population breakdown for each jurisdiction. The county's share is a little higher, because the vast majority of livestock operations are located within the county unincorporated areas. We also conducted a 1990 inventory to serve as a baseline, and I wanted to show this data on the left side first. This is a comparison between the 1990 levels of emissions and 2015 levels, if you consider industrial sources. And you can see a significant drop in emissions due to the closure of industrial facilities between 1990 and 2015 in Humboldt County. And on the right side, you can see the total change in emissions without industrial point sources. And we are not considering industrial sources at this stage of the Climate Action Plan, due to the fact that typically, climate action plans in California don't take into account industrial emissions or try to add any additional policies necessarily to address them. But that's just the status that we're at with the current draft of the cap. And it's important to look at the state's greenhouse gas target, because that's what's going to be the biggest factor in choosing a target for our climate action plan. So these are the state's greenhouse gas targets, and they get progressively more ambitious as the target years go on. The 20 target, 20 target was 1990 levels of emissions by the year 2020, which the state hit. And then the 2030 target is 40% below 1990 levels of emissions by 2030. And then by 2045, the state has the ambitious goal of reaching statewide carbon neutrality. So our recommended target for this climate action plan, which has a horizon year of 2030, is the state's target for the year 2030, 40% below 1990 levels of emissions by 2030. And on to the third key component of climate action plans, the greenhouse gas reduction measures. I just wanted to present the board today an overview of some of the different categories and measures that we're considering with the city staff working group to include in the first draft of the Climate Action Plan. We have a current draft that's for internal review, and we're just rushing that up and going through the process of selecting these measures with city staff and county staff. The first key category is land use planning. These first two are related to transportation emissions. Land use planning-related measures seek to target transportation emissions through the built environment, because where and how we develop has a significant influence on people's transportation choices. And then this is, this next category is the sort of the bulk of our greenhouse gas reductions in the current draft of the plan, low-carbon transportation. And that would be things like promoting the use of electric vehicles and promoting, promoting more active forms of transportation like walking and biking. Then another key set of measures would be those related to energy efficiency. So targeting building energy emissions by promoting the savings of energy, which has the co-benefit of cost savings for the average electricity or natural gas or propane user. And then renewable energy generation. There are two different target areas here. One would be a smaller scale, like rooftop solar, and the other would be utility scale. And here at the County Planning and Building Department, we're having more and more applicants come to us asking about building solar farms on their properties. And we're looking at ways with advanced planning and current planning to collaborate, to find ways to streamline the process, which is now just a conditional use permit process. To streamline the process. To streamline the process for people interested in doing that kind of development on their property. And then finally, we have measures related to waste prevention and carbon sequestration. And there's currently a chapter of the climate action plan devoted to measures related to natural and working lands and resiliency and carbon sequestration. Because that, of course, is a huge asset in Humboldt County for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Or rather, reducing our overall carbon footprint. So I want to close the presentation with a brief discussion on the SEQA outcome, the potential SEQA outcomes for this climate action plan. There's no specific requirement by the state to create a climate action plan, but the state has set up some incentives through the SEQA process. And that looks like what they call tiering or streamlining. Basically, every project that is subject to SEQA has to take a look at the greenhouse gas impacts of the project. And having a climate action plan adopted in a jurisdiction allows project applicants to streamline that greenhouse gas analysis by referencing the climate action plan and incorporating the applicable measures. And these are the requirements that are set out in the SEQA guidelines for a climate action plan to be eligible for SEQA streamlining. And we're designing our climate action plan to meet these requirements. That being said, it's not clear what the outcome of the SEQA process will be. There are essentially two different routes we can take. And we're calling these a qualified cap or a non-qualified cap. So a qualified cap would be a climate action plan that meets all of those criteria I showed earlier and that has a target that's consistent with state targets. And if we have a climate action plan designed in that way and we go through the SEQA process and likely end up with an EIR, projects then can tier off of the cap SEQA document for greenhouse gas analysis. It's important to note here that if projects are tearing off the climate action plan SEQA document, that sort of sets up a requirement to implement the cap and to continue monitoring and updating it. And the other route would be to have a non-qualified climate action plan, basically to have a cap that would not be used for the tiering of greenhouse gas analysis. And in this scenario, there's no specific requirement, at least under SEQA, to implement, monitor, or update the plan. I'm presenting these today just to give the board an idea of what the possible SEQA outcomes could be for the project. And we're working with the cities to figure out what the best fit for this process is. So here's our timeline for the drafting of the climate action plan. Right now, we are in that third step, which is to review the administrative draft and provide feedback. So we're hoping to get a first public draft out in the next couple of months. And once that's out, we'll take to the road again and host a series of public workshops and continue doing stakeholder input. We've assembled a number of stakeholder groups already for different key sectors of emissions and hosted a number of meetings. I think we've hosted around 10 public workshops to, to date. But once we have a draft cap, we're looking forward to getting back out there and trying to get some input on it. And once we have that draft, we'll begin the SEQA process. And because there are still some unknowns, we don't have a great timeline for when the SEQA process could be completed and when we would be ready to bring the climate action plan to the board into city councils for adoption. But the, the next upcoming target date is that release of the public draft cap. And I look forward to continue and come back to the board when we're ready to have a more in-depth discussion on some of these items in the climate action plan. Today, again, was just to give a brief overview on progress to date and what is upcoming with this project. And I'm here to answer any questions. We have, of course, Director Ford and supervising planner, Michael Richardson. We also have some staff from Redwood Coast Energy Authority in case any technical questions come up. But that's all I have for you today. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And if you could stop sharing. Perfect. Supervisor Bone?
What has been the involvement of the Humboldt Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee of this? Because I know we're bumping on two years since we appointed them. Are they part of this or did they get? I, I don't see them mentioned. And I think we all appointed people to it, I thought, a couple of years ago. Are they involved in this or did we just? Are we just doing this in-house and with a select few?
Maybe Director Ford, do you like to speak to that?
In response to the question, we're trying to make this as broad and diverse as a public outreach as possible. And we will be, once we have a draft ready for public review, incorporating their review as a group, as a committee into the review of the public review draft.
So they haven't been involved?
Not to this point. It's been, it's been staff work to this point.
Okay. I don't know if that was the direction we actually did two years ago, but okay.
Any other questions from board members?
I'd like to hear a public comment before we get into discussion.
All right. I don't see anyone against that. I know our first hand up was as the last four digits of 5603, followed by 7429. So if you were 5603, press star six to unmute and you will have your three minutes.
Good morning. This is Colin Fiss. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Welcome Colin.
Thank you. I am speaking today on behalf of the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, otherwise known as ROKER. And ROKER is a new organization with the mission to ensure that local elected officials and government agencies on the North Coast take robust, just, and equitable actions to address the climate crisis and other key environmental issues. We're asking that you support a qualified climate action plan for the county. And as you heard from staff, qualified is something of a term of art in the SEQA world. And so I'm going to just kind of repeat and emphasize some of what you already heard about the importance of a qualified cap. Qualified cap means that, means one that allows SEQA streamlining. But more important to us is what makes a qualified cap eligible for that streamlining. Namely, namely, it must show that the county will meet a greenhouse gas reduction target that is consistent with the state's, specifically as staff are recommending a 40% reduction by 2030. And I want to emphasize that current science shows this is really the absolute minimum we can do to avoid catastrophe. And just as importantly, a qualified cap must include mitigation, monitoring, and updating to ensure the target is actually achieved. And it's enforceable then through the SEQA process. Our climate action plan must meet the minimum state targets. It must ensure accountability and it must be enforceable. And that really means that it must be qualified. So we're asking that you clearly and unequivocally voice your support for this kind of climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you Colin. And our second speaker has the last four digits. 7429. And I have no else. And one more. If you happen to be on and listening, press star nine now so that we know that you want to ask, make a comment. So we do have the last four digits, 7429, and that'll be followed by 7108. So if you are 7429, it's like you are unmuted, so welcome. And you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name's Robi Tenorio. I'm from Southern Humboldt. And I'm very supportive and appreciative that your board is working in coalition to develop a regional climate action plan. It's critical that this plan be strong enough that when adopted, it will help our communities have a better chance at surviving and possibly even thriving in a climate adapted future. Since transportation is over 50% of Humboldt County's greenhouse gas emissions, it's also hopeful that Humboldt County is updating the regional transportation plan. And this plan's latest update sets a regional target to reduce on-road transportation, related fossil fuel consumption in Humboldt County. And there are very ambitious and needed reductions. The targets set in the draft climate action plan have Humboldt County in 2030 being at 40% below 1990 levels of greenhouse gas emissions. Unfortunately, by permitting the large cannabis grows that operate indoors and in hoop houses year-round, there's a big disconnect with this important work that you're looking at now. So while we remember to turn off the lights when we leave the room and we spend our personal money to put in solar panels and other power savings technologies and we take the inconvenient bus instead of driving to lessen our fossil fuel consumption, your board and planning commission are permitting year-round cannabis operations indoors and in hoop houses using generators and PG&E and permitting grows in remote rural locations that require employees to commute for hours in automobiles. In addition to these fossil fuel dependent grows, the industrial sources of greenhouse gas emissions from these industrial grows has to be considered and factored into these equations. To leave them out is disingenuous and it's dishonest. Relying on fossil fuels is a fragile, unstable, dangerous, and vulnerable position to leave us. And especially for those of us in Southern Humboldt, it leaves us in a more vulnerable position with the generator grows and their potential fire dangers. Over 90% of wildfires are caused by humans. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you Robi. Our next speaker and what appears to be the last speaker is 7108. Start six. Welcome.
Hi, this is Bonnie again. I want to back up everything that Robi just said. That was, that was on my list. It seems like the county's going in the opposite direction when it comes to creating this new legalized cannabis industry with the transportation, lots more transportation on these big half acre, acre plus growths are putting on our roads. And so instead of reducing, that's increasing. And then you've got the generators and the PG&E, the fossil fuels used to do these mixed light indoor, all sorts of stuff. And I think that definitely needs to be considered of how you're going to mitigate, counteract the direction that this big grow, generator grow. Garberville substation, PG&E substation has expanded. And it seems like it's expanded not because the population has expanded, but because of the increased need because of these grows that need a power source. So thank you. And I did go to the meeting they had in Garberville. It was a couple of years ago. This thing where you wait until you have, you know, the, the draft plan. It would be nice to have public input and participation before you get to almost the finished product. So thank you.
All right, thank you Bonnie. And there are no other hands up from the public. So we'll go back to the board. And anyone, Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. Through the chair, just a couple of comments. One is thank you for this work. And I know that there has been public outreach and I know there needs to be more. I also know that the folks that have been, you know, appointed to the, to this committee, many of them have had, have been at some of those public meetings and have, you know, at least, at least have been active in that process. I want to also, for the record, put my unqualified support for the qualified plan. I think, I think that's, that's the direction we do need. A something that's, that has a SEQA element to it that, that we can tier off of. It just will both help in implementation and it will help in the monitoring and reaching those goals. I just think it's just something we just, we really need to do. There was a mention also of the solar arrays, the larger solar arrays requiring conditional use permits. And that seems to be some hindrance related to the development of solar projects in Humboldt County. I think that's sort of a low hanging fruit for us in terms of, of expanding our renewable energy resource. And I think separate, I don't think we need to wait for this plan to get done before we have an updated ordinance associated with this renewable resource. And I think we, I would advocate for asking staff to come back sooner rather than later for an updated ordinance so that we can have good land use planning around that. And we've seen one installation be approved by the planning commission. In Blue Lake, there was some controversy associated with that. And I do think that a project like that could both be done better and with an ordinance. And, and also there's opportunities, not just in that kind of environment, but also on our industrial lands as well. And I just feel like this is, this is low hanging fruit. So I want to see that happen. And with relationship to transportation, we have two things kind of happening. One is, you know, seeking a reduction in, you know, fossil fuel use, but also an increase in electrification. That's going to require an increase in infrastructure related to electrification. It's going to increase our, our need to, to generate, you know, electricity, renewable energy to do that. And so I'm hoping that we can also prioritize policies and ordinances to, to start moving in that direct direction as quickly as possible. I, I really don't want Humboldt County to be behind as that technology moves forward. We're seeing that in all our facets of transportation. And so I'm excited to see that. So with that, those are my comments for now. And I do appreciate very much this, this presentation.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you Madam Chair. I also support the qualified cap. I think it's important that we actually get some real life action here in all this. And in that regard, I think one of the ways to do that is strengthening our incentives. You know, the more incentives we give for people to do the right thing, the more they'll do it. We can't just regulate our way out of this with thou shalt not do this, et cetera, et cetera. It's important to have those guidelines, but ultimately, we need to have good incentives in place to encourage these things. For instance, you know, as we move forward, we need to come up with a new system for collecting compost materials and green waste. You know, if you live in the cities, you get a can to put that stuff into. But in the county, there really isn't that option. You can certainly haul it in to various places. But you, you know, compost just goes into the garbage and attracts bears and other problems. So I'd love to see us move forward in the future, near future, with some incentives or systems in place for collecting compost and green waste throughout the county. In addition, incentives for forest thinning and limbing work, which not only helps make for bigger trees which store more carbon, but it helps reduce the potential for forest fires, which is a tremendous release of carbon into our atmosphere. So really glad to see in the governor's budget, a billion dollars, a billion with a B, for forest thinning work and fire forest thinning work and fire prevention. And that's going to be a huge opportunity for Southern Humboldt, Eastern Humboldt, for new businesses and for people to be employed in doing all that work, which will help with our greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation clearly the biggest issue for us in this county in regards to fossil fuels and greenhouse emissions. And so more trails. And I think we're doing a great job at the county of working on, you know, the Bay Trail, the Great Redwood Trail, Annie and Mary ham and trail extensions with Little River. Those are all fantastic things. And so whatever we can do to improve safety for bicycle use and pedestrians will help us reduce emissions as well. And along that line, additional transit runs throughout the county with electric buses ultimately. So very thankful for the work of the staff. Look forward to the committee engaging. And I too is a little bit confused. I'm not even sure we actually ever appointed members to the Climate Change Advisory Committee. I remember we talked about guidelines for membership to the committee. We talked about the value of the committee, when it should be engaged or not engaged. But I'm not remembering, you know, perhaps we did this, but I don't remember actually appointing people to that committee. So if I'm wrong there, please clarify. But anyway, thank you to the staff for bringing this forward. I saw the presentation you made, Connor, up in Trinidad. Good work that you've been doing to help shepherd this through. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. I have a question. If no other supervisors have their hands up. Yeah, and I don't know how much of a question, well, a couple of questions basically. So given the last couple of years, we've seen resistance to, you know, a few of the things mentioned here, such as, you know, the wind farm. A solar has been now kind of like, we don't want it here. I don't know what the approach is, you know? How do we, how do we get past maybe, you know, it's just getting hard in the community? And I don't know what suggestions anybody has, but while people may want to see this, they don't want it where they're going to see it. And I mean, that's nothing you can solve today, but I think it's something we as a board, you know, have to be really clear about that when we are, you know, talking about these items that we, you know, unfortunately, but we do have to keep in mind what it is we're trying to accomplish and do. And we can't keep saying no. And in some cases, that's being asked of us a lot. So I just was putting that out there. It's like, that's going to be some really difficult conversations and meetings, but I understand it's an imperative. It's just hard because not everybody is really too excited about the solar farms in the neighboring, you know, fields and stuff. So it's just something to combat and I don't know how to do it. And I guess I'd ask, are we coming up with some type of an action plan of how do we get people to understand that this is really valued and needed? So I don't know if there's even an answer to that question, other than John, I'll ask you later, just concerned for sure.
Well, I think Supervisor Bass, if I could respond by saying you really answered the question because it really is about the board giving policy direction and then allowing staff to implement that policy direction. And sometimes those are hard decisions and sometimes they're unpopular decisions. But based upon what we have to accomplish, which is a very ambitious goal, those policy decisions need to be made. And I just want to say, one of the truly fantastic things that you have given direction on and staff has been able to work with other cities to do is to provide a climate action plan that right now, all the cities and the county are working together on. And so there is a very unified plan. And that is unique within the state of California. So Humboldt is very much the point of the sphere in terms of bringing jurisdictions within the county together to accomplish this. So it's something that we should be excited about. I do just want to add one thing. I apologize that we have not engaged the committee more. We will make sure that that happens and add that into the work program before we go out with the public draft. They will be given the opportunity to review the administrative draft.
Thank you. And I do have the first hands up were Supervisor Bushnell, followed by Supervisor Wilson, followed by Supervisor Bone.
Thank you through the chair. I just wanted to thank Connor for his presentation. It was very engaging and helped me as a new supervisor. I also want to recognize that climates are ever-changing, also situations are ever-changing. And so I think as those things happen, especially there's been a lot of reference to cannabis policy, recognizing that that is important and important to this document. But I really want to just thank the planning department and Connor for the presentation on all the staff work that went into this.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you through the chair. I'd like to just comment or affirm that, you know, what was brought up earlier is one of the most important yet most difficult things we have to deal with in relationship to our response to climate change, but also our responsibility to that is our land use policies. And even when we did the general plan update, you know, in the SEQA document itself, it recognized that by principally permitting residential development on all our resource lands, that that would create patterns that we couldn't mitigate for directly with relationship to greenhouse gas emissions. Now, of course, we're going to, you know, that's a policy that maybe I disagreed with, but nonetheless, I do know that there is support from board members to do what we can to mitigate for some of these potential impacts, most of which, pretty much all of which has to do with, well, most of which has to do with transportation. And where you live relative to where you work is, you know, that's the impact, you know, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and transportation. That's because that's most of what the transportation is that people do. That is some, there are some fundamental changes associated with that, but there's also impacts to how we manage the landscape. And the more we subdivide and populate broader and bigger landscapes, the harder it is to manage those landscapes for fire and other biomass and, you know, carbon issues. And so it is important that we, you know, maintain a focus on providing affordable and good housing in places where people can access their work environments as readily as possible. And I think we've done, we've really come up with some good policies associated with that. And I'm glad that we're accounting for that in the climate action plan. So I'd like to make a motion that we, that we accept this report, file it, but also I would like to give direction that we move towards the qualified version of our climate action plan. I think this is, I think this is a juncture where we can give that direction and help us move forward. Because without that, we really don't have, we really won't have a plan with the teeth needed and the monitoring needed to do this. I think also to make the pitch for that, you know, the state is going to be pushing more and more things like the qualified cap are going to make us more eligible for funding to do the, to implement these things. And without that and without really front-loading with the SEQA process, we're just going to have a harder time and we're just, and we're just not going to be eligible for the, I don't think as eligible for the resources that the state is going to be putting forward on this. So with that, that's my motion that we move forward with this planning effort in the direction of a qualified cap. Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up. We have a motion to move forward to this plan. Is there a second? First of all, ask for the second. I'm going to have to quit. Any questions?
Second.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Director Ford. I mean, in the agenda item today, it basically said just we're receiving and filed today. So and I assume we can give him direction at any time, but is that something you were prepared to receive today? Or was that something you wanted to bring back to do more in-depth discussion on what it actually means? Since I wasn't necessarily thinking we were taking action on that piece today, but I mean, I'm good with whatever we do.
I think in response to your question, Chair Bass, is that the motion is appropriate, that that is what the board would like to see back. You're not taking action, you're not prejudicing any future action, but it is the preference of the board and certainly that is important for the board to state.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the motion?
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Yes, yes, sir. I am Supervisor Bone.
And I apologize to Director Ford. So are we voting? So we're going off? We're not voting for a regional plan? We're voting for a qualified plan? Or give me a breakdown exactly where we're going on this? Because I understand the direction that Supervisor Wilson's trying to go and I know that it's with COVID and everything else, we're finding a lot of people are finding out that they kind of don't want to live on top of each other. We're finding that changing and so maybe we have to do something more with transportation. If you're going to live out there, you have to have an electric bicycle too. But I'm just saying, there are certain limitations to anything we do. So I'm just trying to figure out what comes from this.
So I don't think there's a fundamental change from the overall direction of where this is heading based upon the update that we gave you today. It is a regional plan. We are working collaboratively with the cities to develop a regional plan. That is the approach. The approach is also to meet the state targets, which would be the qualified plan. And so that has been presented to you as the overall staff ambition, that the working group ambition between the cities and the county. And so what the motion basically says is continue to do the regional approach, continue to meet the state guidelines, make sure that when you bring it back, it does meet the qualifications to be a qualified plan because it's important that we have that SEQA issue addressed for all projects and all things that happen within the county of Humboldt.
Great, thank you. And then to answer the question on the Humboldt County Action Plan Committee, I think what we did is we voted as a board to have it, but I think it was going to be brought forward or assignments or whatever. I know I put Dave and Jane Simpson on it because I think they probably know more about climate action, hitting nine of the ten last U N, climate action plans and everything else than anybody and who I've turned to for guidance. So I remember appointing Jane, I believe. But I think what they, I think what you said is after we have a climate action plan, the final version, we were going to bring in the advisory committee, which I, after it's done, we're bringing in the advisory committee.
Through the chair, thank you Supervisor Bone. That was my first comment. And as I sat and listened to the comments and thought about it, I recognize that there is opportunity right now while we have a draft, administrative draft, which is very much work in progress. This would be the best time to engage with them, to have them be able to modify that administrative draft before the final draft gets prepared, before the public review draft is prepared and before the draft that is used to prepare the environmental document is prepared. So we will engage with them immediately and allow them to.
I'm not, but I'm not sure if everybody, I didn't go back and look at the meeting. I just know that I put Dave or I put Jane on there, was talking to them both. So I, my appointment is on there. I don't know if my other, the other supervisors made appointments or did that or if the Planning and Building CAOs, I wasn't sure what the whole makeup was. So maybe what we should do is bring that back in a week or two with some qualified names, you know, just kind of like we do with any committee. I'd like to see it sooner than later because I think this is something we need to act And I mean, I know from my work on HTA, for the last nine years, we have been moving forward. We're deciding between hydrogen, electric and, you know, always with routes. I think we've taken off-core routes and we've added for lack of ridership. So it's not having the routes. Routes are great, but routes, tires, everything else causes wear and tear, wears the roads out and everything else. You've got to have butts in the seat to make it actually worthwhile. And if we can't get the people in the seats, just because we've got a bus running through the neighborhood, doesn't mean we're doing the right thing. So I think that's, we've, I've had a route closed in my district. Mike's had one closed in his district that was very hard fought for and then nobody wrote it. So that's what we're going to have to follow up on to make sure that we can convince people that the bus is easy, the bus should be the way we ride. So one small fragment of, but it important. Thank you.
So I'm hearing Supervisor Bone's question, a potential to also bring back an item to reaffirm who is on the committee that we've appointed. Okay, that sounds good. As Supervisor Wilson and then Madron?
And I'm happy to amend my motion to add that component, which is to direct staff to update our climate action committee roster, I suppose, and description. That'd be great. I'd also like to, if it's amenable with the board, to add another item, which is to ask staff to come back with a discussion about how we might update our solar array or maybe, John, you can help me with this language. Because there, you know, updating our policies and ordinance around our capacity around solar power. And so what would be a simplified amendment that would, that would work for that, do you think?
Direct staff to bring back an item for board consideration to initiate work on facilitating permitting of solar facilities with an enhanced process.
Ryan, did you get that?
There's a lot going on right now and to write this down, you've got to give me just a second.
Okay, it's all right.
There might, there might be more still coming.
Yeah, so if we can just have the discussion and we can clarify the motion at the end, that's wonderful.
Okay, great. I got, I have, I'm writing down a little list here.
Thank you.
So I'll try and clarify that as best I can and adapt, so.
Something tells me Director Ford probably will be coming up with language as well. I could be wrong, but he's very thorough. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, as a second or I'm, I like what's being suggested as amendments. And again, I very much want to see the list of those appointees on that committee because I don't remember appointing anybody. Maybe I did, but I don't remember it. So anyway, getting that clarification will be great. If in fact, we've already appointed people, fantastic. If we haven't, we might want to put out a notice of seeking candidates to fill those positions like we do with all our other committees. So I just wanted that. And lastly, I want to put a big shout out to the folks in Arcata, just regular citizens who aren't waiting for government and they formed a bicycle brigade and they're going around and gathering compost all over town on their bicycles. So kudos to those folks for stepping up and working on a piece of the solution.
Okay, and before we ask what the motion might sound like, I did want to mention, I do see a hand up in the attendee queue. A public comment portion is over. If you have, if whoever ends in the last four, eight, nine, one, two, if somebody has been working with staff or has anything in that regards, then you can, it's not public comment, like I'm saying. So if you think you qualify, okay, your hands down, really not. Thank you. I'm confusing to explain. All right, so Director Ford, do you want to suggest, do you have language or shall we just ask Ryan?
I have the first three portions of it, which is to accept and file the report, give direction and give direction to move forward towards the qualified version of the climate action plan. towards the qualified version of the climate action plan, uh, direct staff to update the climate action committee roster. And I just need the fourth part.
To bring back an item for board consideration. To consider initiating zoning ordinance amendments. To facilitate permitting of solar facilities.
Perfect. Thank you.
And does the maker of motion feel that that qualifies? Uh, it, it works?
Yes, it does. And I'd also like, if someone could send me that written, uh, in writing only because, uh, last week I had a, the HSU, uh, class, planning class that, um, looked at countywide solar facilities, um, and updates. This was on one of their priority lists, um, through, you know, their recommendations. And so I wanted to shout out to them in terms of the, you know, want to forward that to them and let them know that, you know, their, their work has impact. So thank you.
Through the chair.
Right, Bone? Yes.
Is this all encompassing, commercial, commercial and, um, residential? Are we doing residential? Are we, are we talking about if somebody wants to put? I do 40 acres like out in Blue Lake in a neighborhood that we streamline that to with limited participation. I'm not, I'm not following the, because I actually thought Blue Lake went pretty quick considering, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what, what, what exactly are we stream? I, I'm just trying to figure out. It, it sounds great, but are we, if somebody wants to put 160 acres, are we going to streamline that? And even though it may cause issues with birds, neighbors, agriculture lands?
So th- those would all be part of the discussion and it would primarily focus on a large commercial scale, uh, applications. But, uh, one of the things we may want to consider is situations where like a large ranch, large farm, uh, large, um, industry even, uh, may want to, uh, put solar facilities on their existing holdings. And whereas a normal, uh, house, a rooftop or a small solar array for a house on a farm would be exempt. Would be a ministerial permit to, uh, be able to construct something a little bit larger. Under what provisions would those, could those be permitted? And so I, I would indicate that I wouldn't want to narrow it too narrowly at the moment. But those are a lot of the critical issues that are going to need to be addressed.
Through the chair, that's precisely the conversation we need to have. So we need to have a, um, a meeting to do that. That's not on the agenda today, but we, in order for us to really discuss those issues. It needs to be brought back by staff and I think, uh, so I, I think the motion addresses that.
All right. So we have a motion. On the floor, which has been seconded, it's been thoroughly foamed through, it sounds like. And hopefully if anyone needs more clarity, Ryan can read it again. I think it was. Anyone doesn't, no hands going up. All right. So Ryan, uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Bass?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes 5-0.
All right. I'm going to ask a quick question. We have one item, uh, left. Well, end a close session, but, um, I had received a request for a five minute break. Do we want to take a quick break? Or I have no idea how long this one might last. I just wanted to see if anyone needed a five minute break.
I could use five minutes. That'd be.
Well, good, because I could use five minutes too. So thank you. All right.
There's two items left, the hemp item and the code of conduct.
Well, the code of conduct is after.
That's a time set, isn't it?
Yeah. I just meant, um, before we get to take a longer break. All right. So we'll come back at 11:40. Our next item is public hearing and it comes to us from planning and building. And it's regarding the adoption of an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp in the coastal zone. This is how the hearing is going to proceed. We'll open the public hearing, receive the staff report. Forward, we'll ask clarifying questions. We'll take public comment. We'll close the public comment portion. We'll go back through the staff to make any clarifications and the board to discuss, and then we will move forward. And, um, I guess at this time I would like to send this, uh, ask, uh, Director Ford for a staff report. Oh wait, I'd like to open the public hearing first and now I'd like to ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Good morning again. For our supervisors, John Ford with Michael Richardson and Jeff Dolph. Our ag commissioner to present a request to adopt a moratorium within the coastal zone. The purpose of this urgency ordinance moratorium is really to allow the coastal commission to go through their process to certify the ordinance that the board has already adopted. Establishing a moratorium of cultivating hemp within Humboldt County. The turnaround timeframe has not allowed the coastal commission to take action on this yet. And so in order to not have that vulnerability, we're presenting a, uh, an urgency ordinance to adopt a moratorium until that can be done. Be happy to answer any questions on that.
All right. Thank you, Director Ford. I guess given the earlier part of the meeting, I should be asking if any supervisors have a conflict or have had any ex parte communication or anything they'd like to share before we continue?
About what?
About, yes, Jefferson. Yes. I didn't know if it needs, what we talked about today, I, I, the planning hearing process. County Council, do I only have to do that during appeals maybe?
Uh, Chair, thank you. That process would apply to a quasi judicial hearing. Uh, right now your board's acting in a legislative function.
All right. Thank you. After I, after we passed it today, I was trying to throw that in there just so I didn't make a, you know, forget to do it. So. I'll be, thank you for clarifying. But if you do have any of those things, you know, you might want to mention them. So, uh, thank you for the staff report. Any clarifying questions for staff? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
And our, our carve out for, um, educational institutions will still be in place?
Yes, we are as a strategic matter, processing that separately, but absolutely.
Okay.
Supervisor Wilson and Madron?
I'm just ready to make the motion to adopt staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion in the second. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to, uh, make this point for the public in particular that while this is, um, a moratorium on industrial hemp. By no means does this prevent individuals who want to grow CBD rich hemp. You can grow six plants in your backyard, pretty much everywhere. So if people are concerned about the ability to get that medicine. That is allowed within state law as well as with personal use laws of Humboldt County. You can grow CBD rich hemp. This is really just trying to keep industrial hemp out because of the potential for cross pollination with the cannabis, uh, community, et cetera. And we've heard some real horror stories up in, uh, the Applegate Valley up in south, uh, southern Oregon about not doing that. And, uh, one industry completely took over the other. Uh, so we're really just trying to get out in front of this, but if people want to grow their medicine, you can still do it.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Wilson, did you want to comment?
Well, I mean, if we, you know, it, it also, the other part of that is it also. Unless we do this, we can't regulate, basically what is a hemp plant. Grown en masse in the county. And we all know the conflicts that we're already seeing related to neighborhoods and neighbors and other things like this. We would have no, uh, no ability to regulate any of those, uh, potential conflicts. If we didn't do this. So I just want to be, you know, that, that's part of, part of the issue here. So those who are advocating for this, I do understand and I get where sort of the prohibition lens that everything is kind of running through currently in terms of the culture conflicts and the neighbor conflicts and those sorts of things. And real environmental issues. If we allow for industrial hemp, um, or even the CBD version of this, we have, we would have, uh, no regulatory. We've had basically the same regulatory control as we would over any other agricultural product. And so I just want to be clear, we're, we're, we're also trying to avoid that conflict in the, in the, at least in the short term. So.
Okay. Any of the supervisors have any questions or comments? Uh, we'll go to public comments. We have one hand raised and that will be, uh, 7454. Press star six. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I find this interesting. I, I guess the emergency is you have probably what, at least 10 or 20 one acre grow permit applications and you need to stop them. Or if you ask Jeff Dolph, would there be zero applications? And I understand that this is just strictly in the coastal zone. And so that's what it says according to this for growers in the coastal zone in Humboldt County. So I find, I find it interesting. Um, I always find it interesting. People ask me a little bit, well, what is your angst? Unless it happened while I was in Mexico, uh, the hemp is legal and the, uh, the other, uh, thing that Humboldt County is big on is still a, a federally, uh, non-sanctioned class one, whatever it is there. And I, I just always, I always, that always, always raises, you know, a little bit of a curiosity with me. You know, why, uh, why Humboldt County and I guess a lot of areas. And why didn't that change? I thought that was promised by the presidential and vice presidential candidate, nine ways to heck that they were going to change that. So I always have why questions out there. Uh, for those who understand some of my angst. A lot of my angst in this business is that it is still a federal criminal activity punishable by all kinds of. And of course, the associated money laundering and other racketeering things that happen and a lot of, uh, a lot of us have, uh, as mentioned before by, uh, by Supervisor Wilson, there's been a lot of people that have been basically driven out of Humboldt County. A lot of good retired people who had this put in their backyard and then continue to have it permitted by the county, basically to align its pockets. Maybe that'll go away now that you got 18 million coming from the state or whatever happened to that earlier speaker today. But it's always, it's always interesting to kind of watch what happens in this process. So, um, I'm sure you're going to do what you're going to do. Uh, I don't see the urgency, but hey, go for it. If you're urgent.
All right. Thank you. So we have anyone else with their hand up? We'll go back to the board and, um, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. And I don't know if, um, anyone has any questions for staff. We do have a motion and a second, I believe, already on the table. Any further comment on this? Whoops, time's up. Um, so Ryan, so do please do a roll call vote.
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes 5-0.
All right. We'll close the public hearing and now we'll move on to our closed session. We have one item and I'd like to ask our county council to brief us on that.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 to discuss existing litigation in the case of Menui versus Two Jin et al. Base number 21CV02840-RMI.
All right. Thank you. We will open this up for public comment. We have one hand raised. That would be 7454. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Well, take three minutes. We all want to get out of here. So apparently you are at, at all. And I don't know who Minich versus Two Jin is. So if anybody out there knows what that's about and, uh, is a plaintiff or, uh, whatnot or is part of the, at all. My name's Kent Swatzky. It's 66852889. I'm curious to find out if anybody wishes to advise us. So the public can understand why is it, it's existing litigation. It's not anticipated. I, I hope it's, I hope it's not, it has a case number. So that means it's probably existing litigation. Unlike the gentized item you had last time, which I wasn't corrected on. So it wasn't existing. I can only do that by assumption. Thank you for my opportunity and we're all curious why the county is being, uh, included in an et al. In this case. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on your closed session today.
All right. Thank you. And with that, um, we will adjourn to closed session and we will reconvene at 1:30 for our time set. So. See the rest of you then. So thanks for the opportunity for that. So with that, we will begin our time set item. And this item comes to us from human resources and it's a study session on potential adoption or, uh, potential, um, adoption of a code of ethics and conduct or code of conduct and ethics. Apparently I should, let's break. I forget how to talk.
Chair?
Yes, sir. Oh, we're on a closed session? Is that what you, okay, you have to train me all over when I have a lunch break. Um, we have a report out of closed session.
Uh, thank you, Chair. On item M1, the board voted four to one with Supervisor Bushnell voting no to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Bristow firm for defense of the matter.
All right. Thank you. Now I'll turn this over to, uh, Director Lee regarding the code of conduct and ethics. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members, CAO Nielsen's and County Council Billingsley. It is a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. Thank you for the privilege of your time. With your permission, Chair, may I request permission to share the screen? And I would like to take this time to acknowledge Deputy Clerk of the Board, Ms. Brooke Everhart in facilitating the PowerPoint round this afternoon.
Yes, please. Let's see it.
And again, thank you for the privilege of your time. This is a study session presented to you board this afternoon with respect to the code of conducts and ethics. Next slide. Assembly Bill 1234, Chapter 700 statutes of 2005 requires completions of periodic ethics training for elected officials. In addition, elected official must also take time to discuss how they will govern. And it is important that the board of supervisor implement a code of conduct and ethic outlining expected behaviors and how to address violations of the code. Today's study sessions allow your board to comment, questions and request revisions. The draft of the code will then be revised, returned to your board at a future date for either further discussions or adoptions. The draft code is, is here to as a framework for today's study sessions. And it's important to note that elected leaders should articulate the organizational culture and values that guide how elected leaders and staff behave in carrying out their duties. Next slide. As mentioned in the staff report, staff recommendations for your board this afternoon are conduct a study sessions, provide feedback and general guidance and direct staff to return with a code of conduct and ethics for approval and adoption. And direct staff to return with a code of conduct and ethics for approval and adoption at a later date. Next slide. With that in mind, I would like to take this time to introduce you, Ms. Shaleen Bennett. And Mr. Lars Reed of Libra Cassidy Whitmore will be facilitating the study session this afternoon. Thank you.
May I continue? Okay.
Yes, please.
Thanks so much, Linda, and also thank you Chair Bass, board members and CAO. I've, I believe I've met all of you individually and I thank you for that time. I just want to indicate before we. Start down with some of these specifics that your board is acting in a very timely manner in looking at the issue of adoption of a code of conduct and ethics. And we have seen a spotlight on governing bodies. To place their codes of conduct, ethics, civility rules of decorum on front burners for review and possible revision. And this allows the public to know it's elected or looking at and taking these issues seriously. And so with that, again, I did have the privilege of checking in with each of you on some of these general issues. And as a result, you have a draft code in front of you for consideration, comment, potential further revisions. I just want to note that what you have in front of you, as you see with the slide principles and standards. And the next slide as well, but don't need to move on to it. It is more of issue spotting for your board. It is not in any way, shape or form intended to be a comprehensive, all-inclusive list of codes of conduct, ethics. It provides you with the key areas so that, that your board is able to then follow up as needed. If there are potential violations or allegations of violations of the code. And, and we know that as. Your HR Director Linda indicated. With AB1234 and the ethics training that you're required to go through every two years. There, the, the law in the areas of ethics are vast and complex and it's, the, the code you have in front of you isn't intended to be. The, the only mechanism that is potentially utilized violations of these ethical laws. Are handled in a number of ways, including through the California Fair Political Practices Commission. So with that, I'm prepared to go through in whatever fashion your board would like. The draft in front of you. I can go through it in detail. I can turn it over to you to start asking questions. How would you like to proceed?
Well, actually. Can we stop sharing the screen or do you need to keep this up?
I, I do not. I would just note if we can, for completeness purposes, could we go to the next slide?
The only reason I'm asking is I can barely see you. So if you're raising your hand, your picture is really small. So that's.
And that was it as far as what I needed to make sure that I, I included in pitching this up to your board.
Thank you. Um. So, yes, I, I, how do we, I would, I'll ask the board if they have any feelings on how we would like to proceed on this. I am happy with. However, suggested by Linda, Linda in the spot there, or if one, if someone wants to take a stab at it, I mean, I might. I don't want to be the only one talking, so. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you through the chair. I, I reviewed this and I, I think it's. A good general outline of. Behavior and ethics, conduct and ethics. I'm happy to move forward with staff recommendation in, but we can have discussion more about it if we want, but. I, I think. It's very helpful and it's good. There's some good reminders in there too. I think things like act in the public interest, right? And, and sort of understanding that, that sometimes. That public interest may not align with individual interests or. You know, some special interests. And so I think that's, that's the thing that we, we have to bear in mind as we move things forward in respect for the process. All of these things are, I mean, every one of them, I think, is relevant and, and, and highlighted in an appropriate way. Second, there you go. I'll make a motion.
You have a motion to accept staff recommendation. For a second. I have a comment. Is there further questions or discussion before I do get public comments and perhaps we can come back? Just seeing a hand. So I'm just gonna ask. One of the things I was wondering is when I read this, I know it's our code of conduct and ethics for electeds. Is this just ours or is, is this something that should be expected to be adopted by? Other elected department heads and you know, how far does this go or does it? How do we make sure that everyone's on that same page, not just our, our board?
HR Director, may I?
Yes, please.
Currently, Chair, it is limited in scope to your board. This then provides your board the platform to provide direction to staff if. That is what you, a majority of you would like to then go and. Make it broader to other elected, to represented and unrepresented. Knowing that as you make it broader and you setting that tone, you setting that example with your adoption of a code of conduct and ethics. That you want that then to permeate throughout your organization. And with your represented employees, the only caveat would then be, it would likely be subject to a meeting confer. If you, if the county intended to discipline as a result of violations of the code. But currently in its present format, it's limited to your board.
Thank you. Um, I did see two hands up and now they're down, but Supervisor Bushnell and Wilson both had their hands up at one point in time.
Mine was an accident. I'm sorry.
Okay, and Supervisor Wilson, was yours from the previous time? No, there it is again. Can you turn your, your microphone on?
Yes, I suppose I was interrupted there. To say that I also think that there's good language in here related to, you know, positive work environment. And really the policy role of the board members. So I mean, every one of these is, is excellent. And I'm looking forward to see what comes back. Thanks.
And I apologize if I stepped over you. I Supervisor Bone did a second, then we just kind of started some talking, so apologies.
I actually hadn't made a motion, so.
May I ask for clarification? If there are no questions, comments, suggested revisions. Then the question that I would have is. Is your. Is your board ready at this point to direct staff to come back with this final document for adoption without any further revisions?
That is my intention. Yeah, and which is basically looking at the recommendation, which is direct staff to return with code of conduct and ethics for approval and adoption. So that is what I, that was the intention.
Thank you.
So that is the official motion, correct? Supervisor Wilson?
Sure, I will adapt that to a motion, which I.
Thank you. It sounded like earlier I, you were happy with it. So I think, thank you for clarifying. And Supervisor Bone, did you still want to second?
I will adapt that to a second.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think the draft in front of us is excellent. Like other comments that have been made, I think it provides some really nice guidelines on many levels. And adding that to our board rules will be a, a really excellent thing, I think, for us. For clarity, as well as for the community in regards to what they might expect from us. So I, I don't see approving a code of conduct is the, the difficult part. I think that's probably the easy part. I think the more difficult part is to actually have an open and honest conversation about how we implement that. And if, if I'm, you know, doing something wrong, how do you all deal with me, you know, et cetera? I mean, those, those are the really difficult conversations because they become very personal. But if we can try to not take things personally and have an honest and open conversation about these things. We, we might actually get to a place where we can actually implement the code of conduct, which is what my interest is, is that not just having it on the books, but actually have it become part of our pattern and practice in terms of how we behave and, and interact with each other as well as with the, the public. I'll just use myself as an example. As you all know, as I started the meeting this morning, I made some very serious mistakes last week. You know, and, and literally made racist comments and broad generalizations. And you know, my initial response to that, when it came out in the media was really? Because I, I didn't really know, you know, some of these things, but that's not an excuse. And as I pondered it and I talked to my grandson and my sweetheart and other people. I really had to come to realize that I made some serious mistakes last week. And so I did what I thought was appropriate at the start of the meeting with an apology and mentioning some of the details about all that. So, you know, in an ideal world, we each become monitors of our own behavior. And when we, when something's pointed out to us where we've misstepped or said something in error. Ideally, it's, it's incumbent upon us as individuals first to try and correct that. But let's say I'm not doing that, you know? I want to know that there's a process that is. Can work. I know it's never going to be comfortable, but a process that can work where you all could say. Supervisor Madron, that was just completely inappropriate of you. And, and how you spoke and what you said and et cetera, et cetera. So. Any rate, I guess I'm trying to broach a difficult conversation here by using myself as an example. So that's the really difficult part is actually implementing the code. And honoring it in a way that works and having a process where we can each feel safe. To bring things up with each other when we think things have gone sideways. Because here's the deal, we all make mistakes. I mean, we're all capable of making huge mistakes like I did last week. But it's what we do after that that matters. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of broach this more difficult part of the conversation, I guess, so. Thank you.
One, since this is a study session, I'm actually going to speak up instead of waiting too far. It's like. As a continuation of that, it's just not when we do something that's really audaciously bad. It's like. I'm sure I do it just as much and it's happened. I think we have a tendency or the sport has a tendency to talk down to each other. I think we talk that we know more than someone else. Perhaps not with intention, but it certainly comes across as if it's some kind of contest sometime about, well, you don't know this. And it happens in multiple, you know, happens, I think each one of us probably had done, done that at one time or another, maybe without realizing. We use a lot of sarcasm, you know, and I'd like to see our board stop that, quite frankly. I mean, since we're gonna, Steve mentioned this, it's like, I'm not. I guess Shaleen will stop me if I'm going too far, like we're out of order, but you know, I think that's one thing to be watched for. And it is hard on Zoom, right? Tone, tone is a big thing too. And so to me, those are all part of, you know, Supervisor Madron mentioned, implementation and, and to me, some of it is as simple as. It's hard to catch ourselves when we do these things. So part of it is just being, how do we be more mindful so that. We. Coexist better and perhaps when we're back in the same room, it'll be easier, but I just, I just think that is something that I would really like us try, to try to. See if we can pay attention to also in this, whether it's discussion or, you know, in the future. Just my thoughts to add to what Supervisor Madron had. Anyone else at the moment before we go to the public? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. As being a, a new board member. And not having a lot of past political experience, but having a lot of board experience. I think. What I felt on this board. Welcoming, I felt welcoming, but also in general, it's often caught my eye, the lack of respect we have for each other. Sometimes, or, or maybe that's not a true statement, but it shows through and I. As a brand new person coming in, it's been difficult to navigate at times and try to. Find my way when we're all trying to prove our point, I guess. I know each one of us have different ideals and our districts are made up of different groups of people. And so respectfully, while I might not. You know. Align with your thoughts. I, I, I would like for us to be kinder to each other. Is what I would like to see out of this and we can always respectfully disagree. And sometimes it's hurtful though, and that's just what I observe sometimes. And I, I don't think anybody's intentionally doing it. It just happens and people have heated emotions and feel very. You know, very feverish about what the, the subjects are. But I, I try to be kind to people and I think our board needs to really work on that.
Else could offer up a comment? Now we can go to the public and then perhaps we'll. More discussion, we'll have more discussion after that. I will guarantee it. All right. So if you are on this call and you're a member of the public. Press star nine. In fact, I'm surprised there are no hands up quite yet. So. We'll wait since there's a time delay. Actually, our attendees dropped. Okay, well, apparently we're not going to have any public comment on this. So. Back to our board. All right, I'm gonna ask more questions since, since people aren't raising their hand. And this is for Shaleen or whoever is going to take this one. And we talk about. Code of conduct for ourselves. We know we can't really regulate the public. But. I've had at least one comment, well, I had one comment from a fellow supervisor of, if it feels like we should have something in here that. Allows us to. Not protect staff, but allows us to respond, especially if claims are made that are not proven, just allegations. Because that is a really rough thing on morale too, and we, we, we ran on this, we did this on purpose. You know, so I know we are expected, but what do you suggest? Because, you know, we do not want to stop or stifle the public from sharing their opinions and thoughts about issues. But is there a way we can kindly get somebody on track and maybe divert, you know, kind of like redirect them? Anyway, I, I don't know if that makes a whole lot of sense other than it has come up and, and I would like to know what we can do. That falls within our purview and I do see that as a code of conduct. And we close public comment. But a hand did go up, so we will go. There's one person. Sorry, but I'm gonna revert to public comment and. We're going to go to seven, four, five, four, three minutes. Welcome. Okay, now you're muted. Press, press, there we go.
Virginia, Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes.
I got a technologically blocked during this process with two separate phones, which is kind of interesting. Anyway, uh, I did wish to make comment and I, I wish to start by. Disagreeing with Supervisor. disagreeing with Supervisor Madron. I really appreciate his comment. It was most forthwith comment regarding the term Oriental. There was no negative intent there. Some of my most prized people in my life are Philippine descent. And I did not know that that word, in this day and age, we don't know what words we can use and which words we can't. I'll be honest with you. It changes day to day. So I don't, I don't see anything that he did wrong, but nothing more than a heartfelt way of dealing with it. And that should be an example to all of you on how to deal with a perceived mistake out there. And that I think something that should be noted at this time, I wish to note it. I do have obviously angst with certain board members there. Anytime they laugh at me or make fun of the people in public or make comments, that is inappropriate and that should be sanctioned and admonished. As I earlier spoke, there needs to be a way to deal with that and curtail, curtail those activities. The perception out there is not good regarding, as Michelle brought it about forward a while ago, about amongst yourselves. And you set the tone, you know, you set the tone. When you're mocking each other or making fun of or not being civil, then, then that obviously more than enables a person like myself to treat you folks in the same manner you treat other people. And that needs to stop. I'm happy to cut back on my comments as long as that happens. But as long as what's happened today continues to happen, I shall not. That's my, that's my ability, my First Amendment right. Such things as if you have a supervisor allegedly passing out joints to a county employees, that would be inappropriate. Someone who gets into somebody else's personal space on a regular basis. And those things are things of the past. Those things are not permissible. Now, if you refer to the C A O as arm candy or eye candy, that is totally inappropriate. Those kind of comments, even though may be received in a positive manner by that individual, are not appropriate in the public forum. The bullying of work, of people in the workplace needs to stop as far as getting rid of people that they don't want to employ in their departments. That's been ongoing and I believe you have a case right now before you that I mentioned before. And those kinds of things are going to cost the county a lot of money. And the perception of, main thing here, perception of someone who is engaged in something that they might benefit from as far as, you have a rather long thing in here as far as, as far as dealing with that. And it's, it's all based upon perception. So if it's perceived that someone, let's say was, my time's up. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right. All right. No one else's hands gone up. So we will return back to the board. Sorry about that diversion there that we didn't see originally. Okay, now we're to conversation part. I mean, there is a, there's a motion to stack recommendation and bring this back. But there's been some conversations on some things that we've noticed that, that while not codified or in an actual code of conduct, or I guess actually they, they are, I mean, you have to look at it differently. So I'm just, I'm just asking, I think I'd like to ask Shaleen, you know, given some of the comments you heard before we went, when the different supervisors spoke, do you see, you know, does this code of conduct, does, does it cover it? But then again, how do we implement it? Because I, I do think Supervisor Madron was right of like, okay, we know this, we know we should do this. And how do we keep each other within that realm of treating each other as, as, as well as we should and not falling back on old habits? I don't know if you have a suggestion.
So it goes back to what your board likely already knows, and that's communication with each other in, in a respectful manner to try to resolve at the lowest possible level. If that doesn't work, you then have the implementation on page three of the draft, which speaks to what the process is if there is an allegation of a violation of this code. The hope would be that your board is able to resolve at the lowest possible level with direct dialogue that is respectful. If that it does not occur, then your board does obviously have the option of bringing forward an allegation and then the process that's outlined in this being agendized for open session, et cetera.
This group is not usually this quiet.
If I may, Board Chair, you did ask a question regarding, I, I thought it was along the lines of the board. Is, is there something in here or what could be in here that would allow your board to protect staff? Did I hear correctly?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure if protect is the right word. I, I think, you know, at times in public comment or, well, that's generally where it'd be. Things are brought up that are, you know, allegations and, and things that are said that, you know, are, you know, aren't necessarily accurate. They're, they're just allegations and we are used to receiving that because we ran for office. You know, that is our, our lot in life. But another supervisor, you know, I express concerns about when people go after the employees, it feels like we should be able to do something, you know? And whether that is if you break into someone's commentary with a reminder, it's just during public comments. So how, how do we handle that? Or we just, everyone just understands that that happens sometimes and just to move on from there.
So the question to me is, and I would defer to county council because there's a balancing here. First Amendment free speech rights balanced against other issues, including potential causes of action. But I would defer to county council on that. I would also add a comment, and that is as much as an agency can centralize handling of staff and personnel issues through the head of the agency, typically the C A O, C E O, city manager, whomever it is, as opposed to the governing body addressing personnel issues, it is the preferred to go through the centralized process.
So you mentioned County Council Billingsley. And I know we've talked about this several times because I've always been under the belief that you really, when the public says what they say, unless it incites violence, you know? But, and Jefferson sounds from what you've sent us before that you wouldn't even suggest us requesting that people refrain from using derogatory language about staff. So perhaps, perhaps you can weigh in on that. Yes, please.
Thank you, Chair. I, I don't think there's any issue with asking public commenters to have a certain level of decorum. The issue is cutting them off when they don't reach it. I would say that, I mean, if, if the board or staff in the meeting have a, a serious concern about a comment is made, that's made. The Brown Act does allow for a, for a very brief response from, from one of you if you, if you wish to say something. Of course, you have a right to speak as well. As long as your comments aren't stopping someone from commenting or commenting in the future, you have a right, right to respond, respond to an issue that, something you may take issue with.
Okay, so this, the takeaway I'm taking from there is that if it appears to happen and request a speaker to readjust their tone, doesn't mean they have to, but there's no harm in asking, as long as I don't cut them off. Or the
Yes, Chair, and if, if you're taking time to ask them to behave in a different way, you would stop the clock. And then if there is something you want to respond to after their comment, that's fine. It just has to be brief and it can't turn into a discussion.
Right. Thank you. That's helpful. I don't know if it's helpful for the rest or not, but. Okay. Nobody seems to have any questions. Yes, Supervisor Madron?
Well, yeah, once again, I'll just use myself. It's a lot harder for me to talk about other folks because that's where it gets really sticky, you know, and tricky. And even if you have the best intentions, it can be not necessarily taken that way. So I guess this is my day for apologizing, but I really appreciated what Supervisor Bushnell said about how sometimes we just really make things way too personal, things get heated, et cetera. And I can remember a while back, it might've even been her first meeting or second meeting, where we were making appointments to various committees. And I had some concerns about appearances of conflict of interest. But what I ended up doing was being very preachy, you know? And like I knew what was better in terms of ethics. And I, I remember probably a three or four minute period that I read a bunch of ethics laws off the, off the, the, the state site. And, you know, as I look back on that then and just listening to Supervisor Bushnell today, I realized that whether or not something was happening with an appearance of a conflict, in no way did that mean that I had the right to be preachy or condescending or acting like I knew what was right or what was better. So I apologize for that to you, Michelle, and, and to you, Rex, both for, you know, bringing in personal matters and other kinds of things into that discussion. That was an error on my part. You know, but it's tricky, you know? If you think that you see some sort of a conflict of interest or a strong appearance of one, it is a tricky thing to bring up without creating defensiveness, you know? I know I get defensive, just like everybody. So again, I'm just trying to use myself here, I guess, as an example of where I believe I probably misstepped, not probably, I misstepped that day. And so you have my apology and I will try to do better when approaching those kinds of things in the future. So it's easy, it's not easy, but it's easier for me to bring up stuff about my own behavior, you know, than it is to try and point out other stuff that, that goes on a lot between us all. And I'm not necessarily feeling like we, we need to delve down deep into all that. I guess I'm just hoping that if we adopt this code of conduct, that there will be a sincere effort on my part and all of us to try and really try and do better. I think we all can do better. I know I can. So again, I'll just leave it at that.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. I was wondering, so if along the lines of what Supervisor Madron said, as our board works as one, and if, if one of our board members is fearful that there's a line being crossed, but doesn't want to publicly say, then what would be the procedure?
So it would be at your discretion as to how to handle, if you have a concern, a complaint, it's at your discretion as to how to handle that. This does not mandate that you, you bring forward a complaint, a violation, an alleged violation. This is a, a means to do that, but not a mandate.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
I apologize. I wasn't going to say anything, but if you want to make a complaint, call the F P P C, make a formal complaint and they will follow up on it unless you want to bring it out in the open and then apologize later and everything's okay. They have a system of taking complaints. I've had some filed against me that no, and fine. So I mean, just, you know, but if you, if, if you want to make, I'm just saying, there is a system where you can do it. You can talk to your county council and they'll tell you how to file an actual complaint. Or else you can throw it out over during public comment or when you guys speak and then ask afterwards. But I, I believe there is a, a proper channels that is followed in most government circles.
Well, depending on how egregious something may be, it seems that we could perhaps speak to the other supervisor. Or is that, I mean, I, I'm just kind of going, it sometimes, I mean, because Shaleen, Shaleen mentioned the lower, lowest possible level. To me, I would think if we think something's going on, we would at least afford the person that we're concerned about the opportunity to hear our concerns first. And, and I do have to say Supervisor Madron, I'll, as a good, I'll use you as an example as well of someone who has called after a specific meeting or something, you realize later that maybe it could have been handled a little differently. And you have called and it wasn't that I went and said anything. But maybe that's part of it too, is maybe that's what we need to start saying, it's like, you know, that was a little over, you know, overboard. But I appreciate that you have reached out on more than one occasion when you've recognized a situation. And I think we, you know, we all can probably do better at that. I can, so. And Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I have a quick question. On page four, under C, it talks about, you know, the process of, of handling violations. And it says ultimately, if you move forward with something, you need an affirmative vote of at least two thirds of the board members present. Two thirds is an interesting number, given we have five. So I'm assuming if there were three people at the meeting, you've got a quorum. If two out of three decided something needs to happen, then that's two thirds. If you've got four people, you need to have all four people vote in favor because there is no, you know, three out of four. Well, I guess actually, no, three of the four could vote and that would be more than two thirds. Or if you have five people, you'd still need four to accomplish the two thirds. So just, just playing with the math thing there, whatever. So, okay. Just wanted to get a confirmation on that. And then the other thing I'll say is that I know for myself and my own behavior, sometimes I'm not even aware of what I'm doing and how it's offended somebody. Last week was a great example of that. And so I value when I mess up and somebody, my kids, my sweetheart, or my colleagues point out to me, you know, that that just, that was inappropriate or whatever, and it helps me try to change, you know? But I'm open to that kind of a process. So I hope that people feel that I'm very approachable in that way. If I've screwed up, I want to know about it. Please tell me. It doesn't mean I'm going to accept what you have to say right out of the gate because I'll probably be defensive. I know I was somewhat defensive about what I did last week and tried to go to all kinds of excuses for why I did what I did, but in the end, that wasn't cutting it. And so after talking to enough people, I finally got it. So any rate, how, how do we do that with each other, you know? I'm just going to tell you, if I'm doing something, please come to me, tell me, I'll do my best to change that behavior.
Right? I have a question for Linda. Maybe it's not for you, you can point it to the right person. You know, the motion that was on the floor was basically staff recommendation, which I understand is to bring it back in a final form. Is there, is this something that is in a final enough form that since we have not really given any, anything new to add, that we could actually adopt it today? And that might be no, I just thought I'd ask since we don't seem to have a lot of information. And County Council Billingsley appears to have an answer.
Thank you, Chair. This was agendized as a study session. So if you do want to adopt it, it could probably just come back on the consent calendar as is.
And Lynn, Director Lee?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair. I also understand that Supervisor Madron has made recommendations to somehow fold this code of conduct and ethics as part of the rules of the Board of Supervisor. So I would recommend that in the future staff report, somehow we tie the two documents and have a formal resolution so that is a working documents, a living documents moving forward for the Board of Supervisors. And I would also recommend that maybe perhaps table this to have it periodically reviewed, updated and modified because of the change in the climates and the environment. That would be my recommendation so that we can move forward and have a uniform kind of a set of documents for the, for your board. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee. Yes, Shaleen?
And by way of example, it is a, a living and breathing document. And you're going to give it a test run at some point because you're, it sounds as, I'm hearing you indicate you are firm in your commitment to implement as needed if you do not resolve at the lowest possible level. And as that living, breathing document, and, and as you go through implementation, you may realize it needs a tweak or an adjustment or a modification here or there. I have a board who adopted a code in February and they're looking at a slight and they're looking at a slight modification based on just the implementation process and how it fits them individually. So just a comment.
Thank you. So the motion that's on the floor was staff recommendation. Should we try to adjust that to incorporate what Director Lee suggested? I mean, can you explain, Director Lee, how you see this moving forward in a way that makes sense to you?
Yes, I, I would like to, uh, offer the following recommendation as a motion to adopt, I'm sorry, to accept the draft code of conduct and ethics as presented today, to return to the board at a future date, incorporating the final code of conduct and ethics and incorporating the rules of the Board of Supervisor as a single document. That would be my, my recommendation as a motion for your board.
All right, so, if I recall, we did have a motion on the floor. Supervisor Wilson, and so we'll have to see if that person who made the motion is, can adjust. Yes, Supervisor Wilson?
I can adjust. That seems like a reasonable motion, as long as Ryan can document that.
That's Supervisor Wilson, I, I understand that.
And the second one? Okay, thumbs up, we'll take that as a good thing. All right, Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I would just like to suggest that it, it would be nice to bring this back on the regular agenda rather than consent. I think it's a very important thing we're doing and that would give the public one additional time to weigh in on the subject matter. So that would be my suggestion.
Sounds good. And I don't see anyone saying anything otherwise. All right, so I guess we're ready for a vote unless Supervisor Bone wanted, you, your lips are moving and your hand is up. Okay, guess not. All right, so Ryan, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone? Thank you, passes five votes.
Thank you, and thank you, well, Shaleen and Lars for sticking with us today. And at that, I think our business is done for the day. So we will adjourn.
Thanks. Bye.